Start today with a budget presentation, which is also, which is very important. And then we start with a wonderful presentation from the Department of Parks and Recreation. So this is the Planning Board's 20th virtual meeting in the face of this pandemic. And it's good to see everyone. So we're just going to get, about to get started. Let me do a roll call for our commissioners. I see two up there. I see Vice Chair Bailey, good morning, and Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
Good morning. And so, and I see Mr. Croll, John Croll, who's our corporate budget director. So he's going to present today's budget. But before I do that, I'm going to start with a motion for the draft minutes of July 30th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll start.
Okay. Remind me of those little chipmunks in the cartoons I used to see when I was a kid. Okay, so I'm going to-
I defer Vice Chair Bailey with the motion.
Vice Chair Bailey has the motion. Okay, Commissioner Washington with the second. We have been joined by Commissioner Duonner, so I'm going to call the roll. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duonner?
Aye.
The ayes have it, four zero. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Croll, you are on with item 3C, the six-year plan and FY 2020, excuse me, 22 budget outlook.
Thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
Let me successfully share my screen. Organizer, please make me the presenter.
Mr. Plannigan is here doing just that.
Behold, I have the right presentation in front of you.
Very good.
This is the, it's actually the second step in the budget development process. It's the first formal presentation to the Planning Board. We did have a less for spending affordability committee at the end of August. And... Hold on. There we go. Today we'll look at the key trends. We'll look at budget book, both revenue and expenditures. And then we'll touch briefly on the budget strategy for this coming year and the six-year plan.
Thank you. And may I remind you that you have until 10:35, 10:40 maximum. Okay.
I shouldn't take that long, but thank you for the remark.
Okay.
Accessible base, which drives everything with our tax base and our revenue picture for the commission. From fiscal year 10 to 14, the accessible base fell, as you might recall, from 14 to 21. It's grown back by about 40%. Projected by the Prince George's County OMB to increase by an additional 3% in fiscal year 22. And please stop me at any time if anybody has any questions. Coupled with the accessible base, which drives the property tax revenues, this graph shows that it's the primary funding source for services, excluding fund balance and inter-fund transfers. It represents over 96% of revenue in the administration and park funds and 88% in the Our expenditures have gone up. Apparently, a large portion of the fluctuation in the size of the park fund can be attributed to varying levels of CIP PGO, which go up and down in any given year. Beginning in fiscal year 19, the recreation fund is also larger due to contributing CIP PGO for the first time. The largest portion of the budget being personnel, as it is with most government, the outlook continues to be the most heavily impacted by these costs. Potential increases, health insurance, OPEB, which is post-retiree health insurance, and retirement. The slide at this point is more historical. The project charges increased by the county from 2008 to 2012. Working with the county, we've steadily reduced these charges. Fiscal year 21 was the last year of the formally agreed upon reductions. So at this point, no further reductions have been agreed upon. I was added a few years back at the Board's request to show the, how we actually use fund balance, both in the budget and in actual. The blue is actual, the red is budget. As you can see, we always do a little bit better than we had proposed. So where we had proposed to use fund balance, we used less. Where we proposed to gain fund balance, we gained more. So this is to show historical. Touching briefly on again property tax outlook for fiscal year 22. As of August, county OMB estimate, Prince George's accessible base for 22 is projected to grow about 3% over last year's, over current year's budget. And this projection will be revisited when the November SDAT numbers are released. These are effective dollar increases due to that accessible base. Again, we keep the same tax rate. Cost pressures, potential employee compensation, health insurance, retirement, the operating budget impact for new facilities, debt service on outstanding park debt, and infrastructure Estimated cost increase for each of these items is shown in slide after slide, and we'll begin first with the health benefits. Projected to increase about 7% for fiscal year 22. For retiree health insurance, projected to increase about 4%. Now, again, with this slide and the second, the next slide, these estimates are based on the past, the last year's actuarial valuations. They're the best we have at this point. We'll get new valuations around the first November, and these will be updated at that And even more so for the retirement projection. The projection from last year was that the cost for retirement contribution would decrease about 7% for fiscal year 22. We don't necessarily expect that to be what comes out in the next valuation, but it's the best number we have at the moment. As we discussed in closed session yesterday at the commission meeting, there are compensation markers in the beginning stages of the proposed budget. These are the markers for each of the three funds. About $7 million is included in the preliminary projections for fiscal year 22. Further considerations related to compensation for our two unions, the FOP, we have a wage and benefits re opener for fiscal year 22 and from a geo full contract negotiation. CIP-related expenditures are, look a little different this year. You'll see that there is no operating maintenance costs expected from opening of new facilities in either the park or rec fund. And in fact, there's a decrease of $350,000 from the reduction of startup costs in the rec fund from 21 budget. Debt service is projected to increase, but the capital projects PGO is expected to decrease based on last year's adopted CIP. That may be subject to change, but at the moment, the total CIP-related costs are a negative $9 million and a negative $350,000 for park and rec funds respectively. This slide puts all of the preceding information together on the expenditure side and filters it through so you can get a final amount at the end. The only thing that wasn't discussed in the previous slides was the next to last column, other costs. That's CIS space needs, that's if we are able to move forward on replacing the EOB building on Kennelworth Avenue. And that's the first year's projected potential cost to jump in the following year. Then taking the revenue and expenditure totals that from the preceding slides and put this together by a fund-by-fund look, we have the administration fund. You see the increase in revenue, the increase in expenditure, just about equal. You also see on the projected fund balance that the fund balance is projected to continue to rise. On the park fund, park fund revenue is positive. Park fund expenditures are expected to decrease at this stage. And the fund balance is expected to decrease slightly. I'll have to double check that. The recreation fund, revenue is 2.3 million, expenses about 1.4, and the fund balance is expected to increase. As you note from all of these slides, the fund balances are healthy. Budget strategy for fiscal year 22 in the park and recreation department. We continue to address infrastructure improvement needs in our facilities utilizing PGO in both the park and recreation funds. Continue to focus on organizational stability through work program analysis and succession planning. Continue to develop innovative programming offerings that meet the needs of all county residents in the post-COVID-19 environment. On the planning side, to continue to implement a six-year planning work program primarily focusing on plans, studies, and priority implementation activities that are consistent with Plan 2035 recommendations. To continue in training and education programs, to explain the new zoning ordinance to residents in the business community. And to propose, commission-wide, to propose adjustments to reflect expected operational and service permission changes due to pandemic effects. At this point, we're a little early in the budget process. We do not know yet how that's, how this year is going to play out. Makes it difficult to forecast how fiscal year 22 will play out, but we'll make any adjustments that we feel are necessary as we propose our budget. Moving to the full six-year projections aspect of this presentation. These are the assumptions that go into the three operating funds. Accessible base is coming from Prince George's OMB. Health benefits and for the first couple of years are coming from our health consultant. The latter years and OPEB are coming from our OPEB consultant. Retirement is from our pension consultant. You'll see fund-specific assumptions at the bottom of this slide. CIS space needs. Again, I note that, I will point out rather that fiscal year 23 sees the jump, presuming we're able to replace the EOB building. If not, then this will bump out further. Debt issuance is based on our current CIP cash needs. CIP PGO from both the park and rec fund are based on the adopted CIP with an estimation for fiscal year 27. And then these series of three graphs show the six-year look for each of the three funds. They show that expenditures are being well-managed within property tax revenues through fiscal year 27. Detail is at the end of this presentation. I will not be going into that, but it's there for your review. This is the administration fund. This is the park fund. And this is the recreation fund. Our sixth strategy, continue to address infrastructure improvement needs by utilizing fund balances in the park and recreation funds as well as transferring some small amount of fund balance from the administration to the park fund for assistance with potential administration building. Continue to analyze the maintenance and operational needs of the Department of Parks and Recreation to optimize service delivery. Again, more historical, but to remind you that the remaining project charge total at this point, after completion of the reductions that had previously been agreed upon, is $8.1 million. No further reductions have been discussed or agreed upon. Timeline for the development, as I pointed out at the beginning of this presentation, August 27th was when we held the preliminary spending affordability committee meeting. We have a public budget forums coming up on the September 29th and October 13th. The departments will present their preliminary estimates of the 22 budget on October 15th, and then the planning board will be requested to approve those proposed budgets on November 5th. We'll touch base with spending affordability committee at the end of November, and then the commission will approve the 22 proposed budget on mid-December. And then we'll submit the entirety to the county executive and county council by a legislated date of January 15th. That's pretty much it. What remains is the, are the detailed projections for each of the three funds, the actual numbers here and the, any further assumptions. You're welcome to look at those. The ayes are there. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Croll, can you go back to slide 18 for a second? The expenditures versus the property tax revenue.
Yes.
How does this bode for the future?
At this point, assuming, now, again, these estimations are based on what we know today. We don't know the effect that the pandemic affects on the market at this point. At this point, OMB is still projecting about a 3% increase in assessed value over the term. And that change, obviously, there'll be less increase in funding available. But as you note, on all three of these, all three funds are in very healthy shape with fund balance. When we raised, when we, I say, when the council raised the tax rate back in 2016, it was done with the, based on analysis that we would be able to hold that tax rate for a number of years, as we had in the past from the previous tax rate increase. At this point, it looks like it's going to hold for longer than we originally anticipated. We ranked that 16. Right now, we're looking very healthy through 17. We have not yet begun to dip into the use of fund balance. Generally, on those projections, we build up fund balance in the first few years and then start working down that fund balance. We have not yet begun to do so. So quite frankly, we are in very fine shape for the foreseeable future should nothing else change. But as I said, that's based on the best knowledge we have at the moment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Croll. Let me see if there are any other questions before we go to parks and rec. Vice Chair Bailey?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank, okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Croll.
Thank you. Commissioner Duonner?
No questions. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Croll, and we really appreciate it. And it's enough for us to, you know, we had it ahead of time, so we were able to go through it, and we will can continue, and we can talk to you offline if we have any additional questions. We look forward to seeing you again, and we look forward to our budget forums, which will start next week, actually. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are Parks and Recreation people on? So that can-
Yes, Betty.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we have everyone we need for our next presentation, which is the wonderful, exciting Hispanic Heritage Month presentation.
Hi, Chair Hewitt, I'm on. This is Shonda Washington.
Okay. We got Ms. Washington. Was there anyone else that you needed with you?
My colleague Darlene.
Oh, there's Ms. Watkins. We see her. Okay. Was there anyone else, or there's just the two of you, right?
It's just the two of us.
Okay. Seems to me that's a song. Okay. With that, we're going to turn to Ms. Watkins and Ms. Washington for this wonderful, exciting presentation on Hispanic Heritage Month. As we know, Hispanic Heritage Month started on September 15th and will continue to October 15th, and we're kicking it off early and with a bang, and that's wonderful. So you are on, ladies, you are on. And I think we're pulling up, we're pulling up the presentation. Do you need a second? Okay, just hold on, hold on. Hold on one second. Okay. Who's on mute?
I think Darlene's on mute.
Okay. Well, if she can unmute herself while we pull the, it's not our slides. Yeah, it's the PowerPoint. No, not that one. It's not our slides. 3C, 3D, 3B. 3D, I'm sorry. So why don't we take two minutes while we pull that up? Okay, so everybody take a little break. Okay.
Okay.
Ready to roll? Ready to roll. And look at those beautiful colors.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Hewitt and Vice Chair Bailey and Planning Board Commissioners. I am Darlene Watkins, Chief of Arts and Cultural Heritage Division for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Joining me is my colleague, Shonda Washington, Chief of the Public Arts and Marketing Division. We're excited to join you this morning and share our plans for commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month. As you know, Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated every year from September 15th through October 15th. Next slide, please. Why do we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month? It is because we have made a commitment to cultural equity. We are intentional in being responsive to our changes in our communities. We recognize, celebrate, and take pride in the deep history of Prince George's County that has enriched by Latino roots. And the Latino population continues to grow in the county. In 2018, the Latino population was at 18.5%. In 2020, the Prince George's County Health Department estimated that the Latino population has grown to 20.17%. We also know that most of the Latino population in the county immigrated from Alamo. Next slide. We know that it is extremely important to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. In fact, 2020 marks the fifth year the department has expanded our cultural arts programming to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. The month recognizes the contributions made and the important presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States. Despite the pandemic, the department remains committed to celebrating the county's rich and diverse population and is hosting virtual events for Hispanic Heritage Month. Next slide. We're also committed to continuing to provide a commemorative poster. This year's artist for the poster is Sandra Perez Ramos. The theme for the poster is Latinos Proud of Our Past and Embracing Our Future. And the artist was inspired by the Tree of Life. She shared with us that she loves that the Tree of Life is a universal, very antique symbol found in many cultures throughout the world, but it is particularly popular in Central American countries folklore. The Tree of Life represents heritage, history, roots, family, growth, connection, past and future, duality, life and death, transformation, unity, and continuity. Next slide. Now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Shonda Washington, who will now share more about our programming for the month.
Thank you, Chief Watkins. It's a pleasure to join everyone for this awesome conversation. I am Shonda Washington, the Public Affairs and Marketing Division Chief for the Department of Parks and Recreation. COVID-19 took away what made us great, face-to-face interaction. But we were determined to still provide programming for our residents that celebrated the wonderful diversity throughout our county. For Hispanic Heritage Month, we will kick off this, we will kick off this celebration on Saturday with a virtual celebration that will feature a musical performance by Grupo Miel, a panel discussion about the importance of voting in the 2020 census that will be, that will include an introduction from our Chair Hewitt, as well as a conversation with some amazing community partners, including Gloria Blackwell, Daniel Jones, Ashanti Martinez, Mount Rainier's Councilmember Selena Benitez, and our very own Omar Eden Martinez, who is with the Natural and Historical Resources Division. The panel discussion will focus again on the importance of the 2020 census and voting, as well as potentially discussing in both English and Spanish. We will also unveil the poster commemorating the Hispanic Heritage Month that was designed by the artist Sandra Perez Ramos. Please check out our website at pgparks.com and follow us on Facebook to join the conversations. We anticipate the excitement starting as early as 9:00 AM and continuing until 6:00 PM throughout the day. It will also begin with welcome remarks from our Acting Director, Wanda Ramos. Other activities that are planned throughout the month include highlights in Latin American dance with a compilation of performances by Latinx dancers of recent years, Aladdin culinary demonstration, which we plan to share on September 25th, a pinata creation on September 30th, and Arts and Crafts Grab and Go on October 7th, which we will also use this time to put the posters in the hands of our residents, and a virtual Hispanic Heritage Month film and book discussion on October 15th and October 27th, in which Dr. Karen Arnold will read and discuss Julia Alvarez in The Time of the Butterflies, and also view the movie. We could not have done this amazing work without a tremendous staff, and we, what's exciting about this type of work is we cross divisions. They don't just happen in public affairs, and it didn't just happen in Arts and Cultural Heritage. Some of the team that worked with us was, of course, our chief with Arts and Cultural Heritage, Darlene Watkins, Sonia Kitchens, Jonathan Cardo, Phil Davis, Alex Simpson, Stuart Deekmeyer, Sharon Williams, Sheila Taylor, Kristelle Stevens, Elizabeth Malone, within the Public Affairs and Marketing Division, Ellen Walter, Patty Holman, Nidia Ocasio, Khalil Gill, Pierre Calm Lewis, and within the Northern Area Operations, Hernan Padilla, Carlos Ocasio, and Lourdes Sook. And I also want to acknowledge the amazing leadership that we have of Director Tyler, Deputy Director Steve Carter, and our Acting Director, Wanda Ramos, for their support in creating this awesome event as well. And we'll now take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Washington and Ms. Watkins. I mean, this is, this is an exciting time, and though we can't have our typical in-person Hispanic Heritage Festival, which draws thousands of people to lay manor, this is, you know, we are resilient and we rise to the occasion, and I think the presentations and virtual occurrences that you have going on are just fabulous. And starting with, we didn't waste any time, starting with, with the one on the 19th. And I will tell everyone that though it starts on nine to six, four o'clock is when we have that big panel discussion on the importance of voting and on the importance of census. And because we, and I'm going to talk a little bit about census later. And of course, since we have two other events that are going to take place on September 25th and September 30th, we can talk about, address census at that time as well. So, because census is the deadline, and although, although those are the culinary demonstration, which is wonderful, and then the piana creation, pinata creation, we'll do a plug for census as well. But I think you did a wonderful job. You had wonderful, wonderful celebrations, and as well we should. We have a sizable Hispanic-Latinx population in Prince George's County, and even if we didn't, we still, we still should share. It is very, very important because everyone needs to be knowledgeable. So thank you so much. Let's, let me see if anyone else has any comments. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, well done, but the question, I do have a question about-
Well, well done, but the question, I do have a question about the culinary demonstration. Is that totally a demonstration or some people invited to taste and see what's going on?
It's totally a demonstration, but you've already like filmed the work on it, so there's no tasting available unfortunately.
That's too bad, I was going to make myself available, but thank you.
But, but the demonstration, you can follow along, Madam Vice Chair, and make your own dish.
I don't have that skill, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
Hi, I would also, look, I associate myself strongly with Madam Vice Chair's comments.
And yes, you would.
I associate myself as well. But thank you, Ms. Washington and Ms. Watkins, for a wonderful presentation. And I applaud the programming, especially given, you know, we're operating in a virtual environment. But it sounds very exciting, and I look forward to participating as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
And, and believe me, when Commissioner Washington talks about food, she's very serious, okay? Commissioner Donner?
Hello, thank you for the presentation, this is great. Glad to see it kicking off. And yeah, it's a little bit sad that there won't be a big celebration. It's pretty close to my neck of the woods and it draws quite a few people out there. But it's good to see that we're continuing on in a virtual environment. And for those, for those viewers who may not know, September 15th is the Independence Day for most of Central America. There's quite a few countries that are celebrating or just celebrated their Independence Day. At my, my other day job, we actually had one of our commission employees give a fantastic presentation about to kick off our National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations. So Omar Eden Martinez gave a very good talk about what it means to be Latino and how he's sort of come to grips with his own roots from Puerto Rico in sort of identifying his black, but it's also his Latino roots. And it was really well received by all of our employees. And I actually sparked some conversations after he got done with his presentation when we had a division meeting right, right after that. So his remarks had good effects there and then even started us discussing things after he was done. So hopefully that's also sort of what's going to happen with these kinds of events, that it continues to spark community, interactions, talks that go on beyond just what we're seeing online. So thank you for keeping that up because I think it's important across our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Donner. We have about two minutes left before we take a break. And so I'm going to turn to Director Tyler to see if he wants to add anything, as well as Ms. Ramos or Mr. Carter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the Planning Board. At first I want to say thank you for supporting us and always giving us the freedom and latitude to be innovative in the Department of Parks and Recreation. So I just want to give a shout out to our excellent staff. They're such professionals, do such a great job in every realm of programming and leadership. And I just want to say thank you, I'm so proud to be a part of this team. So that's my comments for this morning, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Carter and I'm going to close out with Ms. Ramos. Mr. Carter?
Yes, just want to say good morning to you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Board members. Great job Darlene and Shonda. And thank all of you for supporting this amazing Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. So thank y'all for being so supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Ms. Ramos?
Yes, and I'm closing it with happy Thursday and happy celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. It makes me very proud. You know, as I celebrate 30 years, Commissioner Donner, that's what we've been trying to do with Hispanic Heritage Month, is educate and also begin that conversation and getting to recognize that there's other people in the country with different backgrounds. So thank you for allowing us to present today. I know it was, it's kind of short, but we didn't want to take too much time off your day, but we wanted to let you know of the great events that we have.
No problem, thank you. And we, and we gave you more time, the budget didn't need that much. So thank you so much, everybody. We will now take a break. We look forward, everybody tune in on September 19th, that's this Saturday. Congratulations, team, and we are going to take a break. We have, and resume at 11:00. Thank you, everyone. Great job.
You too, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. We just finished our administrative items, and now we're getting ready to go into our development review items. But of course, we have lots of announcements. I first want to do a roll call, make sure that we, for those of you who are listening but not viewing, that you know the Planning Board members who are in attendance. So we have Vice Chair Bailey, present.
Present.
Commissioner Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Donner?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, we are joined by our Principal Legal Counsel, David Warner. In, in the hearing room, we actually have our Planning Director, Andre Chekley. And we have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones. We have Kenny Flanagan, who is here working all these PowerPoints and whatnot. We have our Technical Hearing Writer, Marie Proctor. And behind the scenes, we have Ryan Cr, who's, who's working all of our IT stuff and keeping us straight, which is no easy task. So, and then, not visible but ever-present, we have the Chief of Development Review, James Hunt. So today is, today we're in session, it's September 17th, 2020, and this is our Planning Board's 20th virtual meeting since March. During these continued challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our employees, our stakeholders, and staff, while we continue to the business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. Once again, I'm going to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings. All participants must pre-register, and all materials must be submitted currently by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the Planning Board meeting, as shown on the screen. However, in the coming weeks, starting with the October 1st Planning Board meeting, the deadline for exhibits and for registering to speak will be 12:00 noon on the Tuesday before the Thursday meeting. So, to be clear, the deadline for the October 1st meeting will be Tuesday, September 29th at 12:00 noon to register to speak and to submit your exhibits. It is posted on our website, and I will continue to announce it at Planning Board. It will be on the printed agenda as well. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via the email from the Planning Board office. Online, registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may also listen or participate using a phone line in the call-in number provided in the email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking and do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in the room at the same time. And of course, the public may continue to watch the Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. And please note the screen for instructions. We thank you for your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. As always, we commence our hearings with a moment of silence. We'd like for those individuals and loved ones throughout our community and nations who passed on since our last meeting of September the 10th, we will share just a few. Within our legal community, legal land use community, we want to acknowledge the passing of Ms. Alba Gibbs, who passed away at 97 and three quarters of a year. She is the mother of Edward Gibbs, and she passed away on, Ed Gibbs appears before the Planning Board regularly. He's a partner at Gibson-Haller, and his mom passed away on August the 27th at 97 and three quarters years old. We want to remember her. In Prince George's County, we, there was a gentleman who drowned in our Lake Artemisia. The name has not been released, and that was in College Park, so we want to remember him as well. We want to remember the growing victims of the widespread coronavirus, approaching 200,000 deaths in the United States alone. It's a travesty, we ask that everyone continue to stay safe. Throughout the nation and the world, there are so many victims of the deadly wildfires on the U.S. West Coast, burning approximately 4.7 million acres. So 35 people have died thus far, possibly more by now, and we want to remember them. Malcolm Nettingham, age 101, who was one of the last surviving Tuskegee Airmen, famed Tuskegee Airmen. He was part of a five-man crew of black soldiers chosen for the first integrated flight radio communications class, and in 2007 was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal. William Gates Sr., age 94, the father of Microsoft founder Bill Gates, civic leader and founder of the Seattle-based law firm, and after World War II attended law school on a G.I. Bill, helped his son establish the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Ronald Bell, age 68, who was the co-founder of the band, this wonderful band Cool in the Gang, co-wrote Ladies Night, Get Down on it, Jungle Boogie. "Celebration" was his favorite song by the group. Hal Singer, age 100, 1940s and 50s R&B saxophonist. His number-one hit, "Cornbread," stayed on the Billboard charts for 22 weeks. Edna Wright, age 75, who was the lead singer of the R&B group Honey Cone, known for their 1971 hit, "One Ads." She was backup for Ray Charles, the Righteous Brothers, Cher, and Aaron Neville. Toots Hilbert, age 77, who was the lead singer and songwriter for Toots and the Maytals. He claimed to have coined that genre's name, reggae. Constance Weldon, age 88, pioneering tuba player, first woman to play the tuba in a major American orchestra. She joined the Boston Pops in 1955. Seymour Schwartz, age 92, influential surgeon and author, who patented an electrical nerve simulator to treat high blood pressure. Shauna Hogan, age 38, who was the bestselling author who drowned in a pool at her home in Arizona. Ken Robinson, age 70, who was an educator with the most-viewed TED Talk video, more than 66 million on the TED website and 20 million on YouTube. And of course, there are many, many others who I didn't get a chance to name. And of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered a loss of a loved one too. Our hearts go out to you. If we may have that moment of silence. Thank you. Again, it's the month of September, it is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Prostate cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men following lung cancer. Proper screening is imperative because survival rate is good, is great if caught in time. So men, you know what you have to do. Women, you nudge the men in your life to make sure that they get checked out and screened. It is also Thyroid Cancer Awareness Month, Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, National Suicide Prevention Month. It's the leading cause of death in America. There are about 123 suicides daily, and it is the second-leading cause of deaths ages 25 to 34, and the third-leading cause of deaths for ages 15 to 24. The current pandemic has exacerbated the situation. So reach out to people that you know, try to be as uplifting as possible. It is World Leukemia and Lymphoma Awareness Month as well. It is College Savings Month, good luck with that. It is Healthy Aging Month, designed, now this was designed to focus on the positive aspects of growing older. That is a wonderful thing. The first positive aspect is that we are here to grow older. It's a great reminder, and so now to get with the program for healthy aging. It is Hunger Action Month, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our area food banks, the many people who have donated to the food banks, all of our volunteers who have contributed, who have worked with food distribution, our census team who has been out there on Saturdays. We've been distributing food at various faith-based communities and things of that nature because there is a huge food insecurity in Prince George's County and elsewhere. And so I particularly want to thank our Department of Parks and Recreation that has been doing grab-and-go lunches five days a week for months. So we want to thank them too. It also happens to be National Bourbon Heritage Month, Honest. There was a resolution passed by the United States Senate and House. It is National Prime Beef Month and National Classical Music Month. Now, you put those three together, it's a nice combo, some might say. September 17th, 1787, the U.S. Constitution was signed by delegates at the Philadelphia Convention. Now, obviously, not all of us were included in "We, the People." But thankfully, and thankful to those who came before us who championed so many causes and risked their lives, we are thankful for the Bill of Rights, the Civil Rights Movement, the Civil Rights Act, and so much more. So because of that, September 17th is now known throughout the country as Constitution Day, and schools are requiring educational programs about the Constitution. And I know some of us just spoke and did a presentation for Constitution Day today. On this day, 1849, a 21-year-old Marylander, Harriet Tubman, first escaped from slavery in Maryland. What's remarkable is that after the treacherous journey to secure her own freedom, the indomitable Ms. Tubman went back to the South to secure freedom for others. Braving the hunting dogs, the gun and whiptoeing slave masters, and the treacherous environment, she, she went back and rescued scores of additional enslaved people using a network of secret routes, anti-slavery activists, and safe houses dubbed as the Underground Railroad. And she did this more than 13 times. Years later, she was an activist for the women's vote, and remarkably, she was nicknamed Moses because she led her people to freedom. And remarkably, she lived to be age 90 or 91 because her exact date of birth was obviously not recorded back then during slavery. Nicknamed Moses, she led her people to freedom and later noted, "I was the conductor of the Underground Railroad and never ran my train off the track and never lost a passenger." 1920, 100 years ago today, the NFL was organized, the National Football League. 1947, the extraordinarily talented All-Star professional baseball player Jackie Robinson was named Rookie of the Year. This was the very same historic year that he left the segregated Negro leagues and integrated Major League Baseball when Branch Rickey signed him to play with the Brooklyn Dardges. He also won the National League MVP in 1949, and Major League Baseball retired his number, 42, in 1997. It remained retired until the late Chadwick Boseman donned that number in his movie, 42, where he portrayed the late Jackie Robinson. So we want to remember that as well. 1964, the Supremes released their hit Single Baby Love. 1982, the Destroyers released their hit Bad to the Bone. 1974, TV premiere of MASH. And 2019, one year ago today, at the tender age of 16, Swedish climate activist Greta Thunberg courageously addressed and admonished Congress about climate change. She said, "I know you are trying, but it's just not enough." Sorry. I really believe Ms. Thunberg, at her young age, was on to something, and we all need to pay attention. We want to go to the Planning Department. So the next speaker series will take place on September 23rd at 10:30 via GoToMeeting. It's entitled Small Scale Manufacturing and Main Street: The Secret Sauce. The guest speaker will explore economic development strategies based on entrepreneurship, small-scale manufacturing and business, and new real estate models for Main Street. So you can see the rest on that slide depicted in front of you. Then we have the 2020 Budget Forums, which will be held virtually this fall. The public is invited to participate or provide comments in writing. So the Budget Forums will be held on Tuesday, September 29th and Tuesday, October 13th at 7:00 p.m. And to sign up to speak or learn how to submit comments, you can visit pgplanningboard.org, where everything is also depicted on the screen in front of you. Finally, well not finally, Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. We just had a wonderful presentation. We will have kickoffs on Saturday, September 19th. It runs from the 15th to October 15th, but we're starting early. There will be all-day events. I do want to take a moment to highlight the one that will take place at 4:00 p.m., which is a panel discussing the importance of census and of voting, particularly to the Hispanic-Latinx community. There will be cooking demonstrations and... There will be cooking demonstrations and dance and musical performance, and you can watch via Facebook and YouTube. It is imperative that we celebrate everyone in Prince George's County. We have such a diverse community, and we embrace everyone, but it's important that we are knowledgeable about our history and about our demographics. So, this is an opportunity for everyone, and it will be big fun. Fun on census. Today is September seventeenth. The census deadline is September the thirtieth. There are only thirteen days left to complete your census. I know most of you in our viewing audience have done so already, but please, you can tell ten, you can count ten. Please forward this. There is a QR code right there. The response rates are behind, and we really need everyone to contribute. MyTwentyTwentyCensus.gov or eight-four-four-three-three-zero-twenty-twenty. And then, I want to acknowledge that tomorrow is the beginning of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and we want to, it's a celebration of the Jewish New Year, and we want to remind everyone and say, particularly those who celebrate the Jewish New Year, so we wanted to remind everyone that it is Rosh Hashanah. And finally, how about Sunday? That Washington football team, it was the big comeback. So, they were down, they were down seventeen to zero, and then scored twenty-seven straight points as the comeback kids. So, they are now all alone in first place in the Eastern Division since Philly, the Giants, and the Cowboys all lost. So, okay, hope springs eternal, so let's hope they hang in there. And finally, we want to wish a very, somebody's celebrating a birthday here, and we wanted to wish a very happy birthday to our own technical hearing writer, Lee Kracka, who is here today, and we want to celebrate and say happy birthday to Lee. Happy birthday to Lee. Come on, Ryan, happy birthday to Lee.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Can you all hear that? Happy birthday, Lee. Thank you. Again, we thank everyone and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during this pretty horrific new normal. We ask that you make every effort to stay safe. We look out, please look out for one another, stay strong, stay resilient, stay woke, and remain ever hopeful as we strive to get through these challenging times together. We are being resourceful here. We hope you are being resourceful in your lives and that you continue to look out for one another. Reach out to somebody. As I said, it's National Suicide Prevention Month. Reach out to someone who may be alone and look out for other people, not just yourselves. Thank you. Without further ado, I'm going to go to Item Four-D, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone here to speak on Item Four-D? I think we have Mr. Haller. Mr. Haller, are you signed up? Do you, are you just here if there's any questions?
I am sorry, Madam Chair, I was muted. I am here just to answer questions, although I would like to note one small correction on the staff report, which I brought to staff's attention, and that is on page one of the staff report. It says that the detailed site plan for this case is pending action by the District Council. It was actually approved by the District Council on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. I just wanted to make sure the record was clear as to that.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Heath, you're on?
Madam Chair, this is Sherri Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. We have noted the correction, and we'll ensure that's done with the resolution.
Thank you so much. Okay. And with that, I'm going to turn to, we're going to go to Item Six. Item Six will be followed by Item Seven. Oh, I'm sorry, the vote, that's important. Okay. So, was there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve with the correction as indicated by staff and attorney.
Were you, who seconded it? Commissioner Washington?
I think we both did.
Okay.
But we both.
Okay.
I give further Mr. Dorner this morning.
Okay, Mr. Dorner, this is the second. Okay, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, four is zero. The next item is Item Six. I'd like to make sure that we have everyone. As a matter of fact, I only have one person signed up for that, which is Sarah Benton, who's our own staff person. Ms. Benton, are you on?
Present.
Wonderful. So, you're on, you can present.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Sarah Benton with the Long Range Planning Section. We are here today seeking your approval to initiate a sector plan for the West Heightsville Queens Chapel area, an approval to transmit the recommended goals, concepts, guidelines, and public participation program, a draft resolution of initiation, and a request for a twelve-month extension of the timeframe to prepare the preliminary West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan to the District Council for their approval. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation of the plan that I can share with you, and I can proceed with that, but wanted to pause here in case anyone did have a motion.
I don't know that we need the PowerPoint at this point in time unless someone else has, that we actually have, we have it, we have a hard copy in front of us right now. Does any, you know what, go ahead. It's only six slides.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, the Planning Department seeks to initiate a new sector plan for West Heightsville in the areas surrounding the West Heightsville Metro Rail Station designated a local transit center by Plan Prince George's Twenty Thirty-five Approved General Plan, or Plan Twenty Thirty-five. This plan will replace in its entirety the two thousand and six approved Transit District Development Plan for the West Heightsville Transit District Overlay Zone. It will supersede within the project boundaries the nineteen ninety-four approved master plan for Planning Area Sixty-eight, and also within the project boundaries the two thousand and four approved Sector Plan for the Prince George's County Gateway Arts District. Next slide, please. The West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan area is located within Planning Area Sixty-eight, which includes portions of the city of Hyattsville, the town of Brentwood, and the city of Mount Rainier within Councilmanic District Two. The area is approximately a thousand acres located along Queens Chapel Road, and it's anchored by the West Heightsville Metro Station on the green and yellow lines. The Sector Plan area is generally located south of Prince George's Plaza Metro Rail Station, east of the northwest branch of the Anacostia River, and north of the District of Columbia, and west of Queens Chapel Road, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and Allison Street. Next slide, please. The primary goals of the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan are to work with the community, stakeholders, elected officials, and other interested parties to create a consensus vision for the future of West Heightsville Queens Chapel area that meets the needs of local residents while also advancing countywide goals for sound land use, quality of life, transportation, environmental protection, and economic development. This new Sector Plan will implement Plan Twenty Thirty-five by setting goals for sustainable growth and preservation, develop policies that facilitate implementation of these goals, and identify specific, realistic, and achievable strategies and actions that bring the vision to fruition. Next slide, please. Here we have a summary of our project's schedule. After Planning Board initiation and going to District Council, we expect to have our existing conditions report ready this winter, and our consultants that we're working with should have their final report along with recommendations for this plan by July twenty-twenty-one. We'll work in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. Staff will work to draft the Sector Plan and then start the interagency and peer review process to have a public release of staff draft plan by June twenty-twenty-two. We anticipate a joint public hearing in September twenty-twenty-two, followed by Planning Board adoption December twenty-twenty-two, and looking towards council approval in March twenty-twenty-three, and if necessary, any amendments to the second joint public hearing bringing us up to June twenty-twenty-three. So, what are the next steps? The next steps would be approval of the resolution and transmittal from the Planning Board to the County Council of the goals, concepts, and guidelines, and the public participation program. Then, we will seek District Council initiation and approval of the same. With that, I want to thank you for your time and open it up for questions. Thank you.
Okay, so let's see if there are any questions, and if not, we'll take a motion. Madam Vice Chair? She's muted. Hold on.
No questions.
Okay, no questions. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner?
Yeah, to what extent will this incorporate the TDVP that's just to the north or the Prince George's Plaza Metro Station? And then, other sort of just more general comment, I'm glad that we're doing this because if you, if you listen to like the city of Hyattsville's city council meetings, a lot of the criticisms that come locally are that West Hyattsville is just kind of the ignored portion of the city, and a lot of development happens in the Arch District around the TDVP. So, having something that actually incentivizes, and the unfortunate thing is that the West Heightsville area tends to be the lower-income, kind of more diverse section of Hyattsville. So, anything that kind of helps spur development in that area without creating gentrification or kind of pushing people out who are already there, i.e. more affordable housing or other sort of accessibility options would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner. We actually just this week have started a few of our preliminary stakeholder interviews, and we've heard very much some similar comments about West Heightsville being sort of the neglected or forgotten part of Hyattsville. So, we appreciate your comments. And as far as your first, your question about Prince George's Plaza, TDVP, our planned boundary just comes up to the edge of that boundary. So, we are including that established neighborhood there as far as looking at better connectivity for residents to the West Heightsville Metro Station as well as to the Prince George's Plaza Metro Station. If I have any other questions?
No, that's great. As you go right up close to the metro station, I don't know if it ever got fixed, but something that was a problem for years was the accessibility of the neighborhood just south of the Prince George's Metro Station because it, there was kind of a steep incline and a kind of gated area that blocked that neighborhood from getting access to the metro. So, it literally shut off that part of West Heightsville from the metro access, and it wasn't, it wasn't accessible either for people who might have mobility challenges. So, if it has not been improved, then that would definitely be something that I'm sure that neighborhoods would appreciate being addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will definitely be looking at that. We've heard those comments from some stakeholders about the accessibility issues on the northern end of our boundary to the Prince George's Plaza Metro Station. So, we will definitely be looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we want to thank Project Manager Ms. Benton and Deputy Project Manager Ms. Heisen. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve the transmittal of the recommended goals, concepts, guidelines, and public participation program, the draft resolution of initiation, in addition to requesting a twelve-month extension for the West Heightsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan to the District Council.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Is there a problem?
Thirteen months.
It's thirteen months. Did we say something different? Thirteen months? Okay, thank you.
I said twelve months, I thought it was in the staff report.
Oh, okay. Let's go with the, okay, so that's, she had it right. Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, everyone voted aye, there's nothing, no other discussion. So, the ayes have it, four, zero. Thank you. With that, we're going to turn to Item Seven, followed by Item Eight. So, actually, it'll be seven, eight, and ten, so giving folks a heads up. So, let me make sure we have everyone. No, hold on a second. Let me make sure we have everyone that we need. Ms. Thompson, you're on?
Yes, ma'am.
Bobby Ray, are you on?
Present.
Ms. Finch? You see her? Ms. Finch? Okay, I'm gonna pass Ms. Finch for a second. Ms. Howerton? Ms. Howerton? I see you're unmuted. Ms. Howerton? Okay, I'm gonna skip Ms. Howerton and Ms. Finch for a second. Ms. Hassan?
I'm present.
Thank you. Okay. Well, you know what, Ms. Hassan, you got it. Okay. Okay, Ms. Ewing, you just arrived. Okay, Ms. Ewing, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Hill?
Present.
Okay, Jason Fritz?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, wonderful. So, we have everybody. Ms. Thompson, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Ivy Thompson with Special Project Section, representing Mandisburg Referral in our nineteen-oh-one F. Glen Ridge Middle School. This proposal is reviewed per Landmark Article Section twenty-dash-three-zero-one to three-zero-five of the Maryland United State Post Mandisburg Referral. The Glen Ridge Middle School project is the new construction of an approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square-foot building and associated site improvements. The first-class county public school education facility, fastly planned, identifies the need of construction of a new school facility to alleviate current overcrowded and reverberating schools and meet the demands of projected enrollment. Next slide, please. As you can see, the project is located in District Three. Next slide, please. The site is a fifty-seven home, six-nine-acre site with a proposed middle school, parking and play field, and is located on land owned and maintained by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. Next slide, please. The site is zone as reserved open space and is bounded to the northwest and south by single-family homes, to the southeast by the Glen Ridge Elementary School, and to the northeast by the Veterans Parkway, also known as Maryland Route Four Ten. Next slide, please. The subject property is not located within any overlay zone. Next slide, please. And as previously noted, the site does note, is, the site does a but. We are on Route Four Ten. Next slide, please. The site includes an Anacostia River Basin and a regulated environmental protection area. The site is subject to a T2 tree conservation plan, and a revised natural resource inventory has been requested. Next slide, please. The aerial view of the site includes a maintenance facility and several yards of the purple line transit system, which will be operated by the Maryland Transit Service, that is being developed on the eastern side of the property along Veterans Parkway. Next slide, please. The site plan shown to the right of the screen shows the orientation of the building, pedestrian, and vehicular circulation, parking, and recreation areas. The new school facility is designed with a state-ready capacity of one thousand two-hundred-and-nine students. The middle school will have a cafeteria, cheney, and business room, dance studio, locker room, staff, and student locker room. The proposed site amenities include one hundred and seven parking spaces, a bus loop with twenty bus parking spaces, American with disabilities act compliance sidewalk, walking trail connections to the park, asphalt work, court, a copper-filled requisite lighting row, furniture improvement landscaping, and stormwater management. While the lighting is deemed generally acceptable, the use of full-cut offlighting fixtures is recommended to reduce light pollution and limit the glare on the adjacent residentially-zoned properties. The rendering of the proposed landscaping, which is shown to the left side of your screen, is is generally accessible, but again, additional landscaping is recommended throughout the site specifically where the existing single-family houses are located along the north, southeast, and southwest property lot. That is also recommending the inclusion for outdoor educational elements in the landscape design such as learning spaces, butterfly gardens, native plant gardens, or interpreted signage, which is also encouraged. Next slide, please. There are two proposed vehicular access entrances. A proposed bus loop via Glenridge Drive and a separate vehicle student drop-off and parking access via Gallison Street. Those access points are designed to be separate from one another to relieve traffic congestion during the morning and afternoon hours. The Glenridge Drive access design includes 25 vehicle parking spaces and a bus loop with 20 bus parking spaces on the western side of the building adjacent to the basketball court and soccer field. The Gallison Street access design includes a loop drop-off area and 82 vehicle parking spaces on the southern side of the building near the school's primary entrance. The circulation plan shows sidewalk circulation paths connected to all the amenities. Pedestrian bicycle access are via several points, including Glenridge Drive, Gallison Street, and Greenland Park. The pedestrian path connects to Parkville and Sheriff Park, Sheriff's Path leading to Glenridge Park. Next slide, please. The building will be finished in a modern style with a combination of brick, metal siding, and glass. The building has varied roof lines, which include a roof over the main entrance and a floor ceiling glass will floor to ceiling glass windows, which will provide natural light. The south elevation facing the drop-off and visitor parking is finished with a brick-based glass and accents with metal siding and provides a courtyard space for school events. The other elevations are finished with two different shapes of brick, glass, and metal siding accents. The building will utilize numerous green building features and the project will seek LEED 4.0 Silver Center certification. Next slide, please. The, uh, this slide shows the front entrance elevation and the vehicle parking lot. The approach to the building that is shown on this side, on this slide, is two stories. And as the visitor travels downhill to the park, the building's parked with a lower level and crest and a platform swing facing the park, and that will be three stories. Next slide, please. The recommendations include a provision for landscaping and trees, lighting, outdoor educational amenities, bike racks, pedestrian connections, and coordination with parks with project points and MNCP owned property. This application was reviewed for conformance with the planning board's adopted uniform standards for mandatory referral received with asset force and the technical staffing force. Next slide, please. Please note that via email received yesterday morning that PGCPS staff of Prince George's County Public Schools has expressed concerns regarding recommendation 12, which suggests a delay in issuing building permits. It is, um, their concern is that this is contrary to the agreed term sheet between PGCPS and the Parks Department. The basis for the objection is, one, it is contrary to the existing written agreement between the parties. Two, this would delay a critical project that is already one year behind schedule. And three, PGCPS needs to give these permits off the budget to do the work necessary to satisfy many of the other requests in this staff recommendation. With that, staff recommends that the planning board adopt the staff comments and transmit them to the applicant, and this includes staff's evaluation.
So, um, thank you, Ms. Thompson. I have, I know I'm gonna turn to folks for questions. The first question I have is, so this is a new school and it's on park and planning property, commission property, and, which is still owned by Park and Planning at this point in time. The, I wanted to know the proximity of the elementary school. I think it's to the south or maybe southeast, but how far is that?
You, if you can go back to, I'm sorry, I don't have my slide. Can you go back to, can, can I?
This is, this is Jason Fritz with Attec Engineers, civil engineer for the project on behalf of Gremmon Parker Architects and Prince George's County Public Schools. The, the next property to the east is the Glenridge Elementary School. As the crow flies, it's about 1,700 feet from the middle school to the elementary school.
Thank you. Okay. And then the other thing is, I'm going to go, I'm going to turn to our legal counsel at some point, probably right about now, because I heard what you said and you, what you're saying that the public schools are saying that this is contrary to an agreed upon, to our current agreement. And I didn't think we had an agreement yet. I thought it was under review. So I need to know, in terms of the land exchange and you would, if the property is still owned by Park and Planning, we'd have to, legally, I'm not sure that we can do what the school is asking. And I'd like to turn to Mr. Warner if he's prepared to address that issue because I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, that we, that this is in violation of an existing agreement or runs afoul of an existing agreement. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, David Warner, David Warner, Principal Counsel, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I got a copy of the existing letter agreement between the school board and the commission and it specifically requires that the agreements that the condition 12 recommend get completed before a permit be issued are the same agreements that, that both sides agreed would be approved and executed prior to any construction on MNCPPC property. So to me, it's very clear that those agreements have to be completed as the condition requires before a permit would be issued.
Mr. Warner, where, what's the status of that agreement now?
Uh, that agreement, the, the one that's currently being negotiated between the parties is with the school boards, that's right.
Okay, so it's with the school board attorneys?
We prepared the draft and sent it over to the, the school board. I'm not sure how long ago, but the parties have been going back and forth on the terms of those two agreements that they agreed would be finalized before issuing a permit for construction.
Okay. So, and, and, and I guess, since it's parks and recreation property, I guess it's Ms., our counsel is Ms. Manaval? On that?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so maybe we should.
And I have spoken with her about the issue and of course, there are many issues that need to be resolved and those agreements that are currently negotiated, such as access, timing, things like that, that are the purpose behind those agreements that are important to have finalized before the project moves forward.
So right now, it's, it's in the hands of, right, at this point in time, it may come back to us, but at this point in time, it's in the hands of the legal counsel to the, to the Board of Education. Okay.
Yep, that's my understanding.
Thank you. Okay, let me see if the board has any questions of either you or Ms. Thompson at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, um, there was some reference to the population for this particular school site and what was that number?
It was 1,209.
Okay, all right, thank you. No other questions?
Was that your only question? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Washington?
No, my questions were addressed by counsel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dornar?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on down the list. I don't know if Ms. Finch or Ms. Howerton have anything to add. Ms. Hassan? Well, Ms. Finch or Ms. Howerton, do you have anything to add?
Madam Chair, for the record, Helen Hassan, representing Parks Department. I would just like to add that we in 100% support of the, this land exchange and building the school on a parkland, but certain agreements need to be in place to make sure that everything is done correctly and that impact on the parkland somehow mitigated in a kind of legal documents, which will be reported as part of the land record. Just for the informational purposes, we sent that land exchange agreement to the Board of Educational Legal Staff on July 31, 2020. So we did not get any feedback from them. And we also sent the recreational facilities agreement on September 8, 2020. So everything in their port and as soon as they sign these agreements or agree to the terms of the agreements, we will be happy to release this grading currently on hold. But also, Madam Chair, I'd like to also, I think it's in the staff report for the mandatory referral also describes the status of the permit application, which is on hold. It's on hold not just because of this agreement, but it's on hold because some other issues. You know, they need to be prepared and submit the tree conservation plan. They need to submit a site plan, sediment erosion control plan, fine grading plan. So, so that all these requirements still on hold. And I was checking with the permit section this morning and none of that, like whatever had been requested had been submitted. So that this request for the permit application for this information had been sent on June 29, 2020 to the applicant to respond for this, like, requirement. And they didn't get any, any resubmission of the plans at this point. So while I understand that, you know, they're anxious to move on with this construction and we're in total support of this, like, process, but you know, the, it's, it's some requirements. It's not just on us, but by the county permit process, it has not been still met in order for us to release the grading permit.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
This is a, this is a.
No, I'm not, I didn't call on you yet, Mr. Fritz, hold on a second. Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Hassan. And I wanted to know if Ms. Ewing had anything to add to that? Or is, or did Ms. Hassan pretty much summarize it?
Well, no, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hassan handled, handled her comments well, thank you.
Okay, so basically, what, Ms. Hassan, first of all, legal counsel gave his opinion and, and that the, according to Ms. Hassan, that the legal document was forwarded to the Board of Education Attorneys on July 31, 20, and the permitting, outstanding permitting issues, which are set forth on page 10 on the staff report, were transmitted on June 29, 20. Okay, so now I'm going to turn to, let me, let me see if the board has any questions and then I'll come to you, Mr. Fritz. I have Mr. Fritz and, and Mr. Hill, but Mr. Fritz, you may want to go first, it seems. Let me see if the board has any questions though first. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, I'm kind of puzzled, what implications would the legal documents have on, in the decision that we have to make today, that we propose, we might make today rather?
Oh, I don't think it's, no, I don't think it's, I don't think it stops us from making, it's just something outstanding, I don't think it stops us at this point. But I think what they're saying is they, they take exception to condition 12, to recommendation 12, huh?
But it does not impact.
No, no.
Okay.
Let me see, was that your only question?
That's the only question.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Okay, so, Mr. Fritz, do you wish to speak first? You have to unmute him. Oh, you have to mute, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that.
It's okay.
So I, I'm not sure where the information was obtained regarding where we are in the permit process, but, but pretty much all of that is incorrect. You know, we have filed the site development fine grading permit with DEPI. The TCP2 has been in review, you know, back and forth with comments for some, some time, as well as the sediment control plan submitted to Prince George's County Soil Conservation District. So I just, I wanted to state that. I guess the, the other thing that I want to identify is, you know, understand the, the term sheet that was agreed to. We know that these negotiations between PGCPS and Park and Planning, you know, historically take a long period of time. I believe there's been a number of other projects in the past where similar agreements have been made that have not dictated or prevented the building permit from continuing forward. Just to be clear, you know, we probably still have several months of permitting until we can even get to a point where plans would be approved, assuming the, the end of the year or so. Then we're talking about, you know, two months or more, or two for the building. And, you know, given that timeframe, I think all these negotiations between the school board and Park and Planning will be resolved. There's a financial implication here that in order for the school board to continue forward with the replacement of existing amenities that, you know, have, have been preliminary agreed upon, you know, the school board in order to fund that, they have to get the funding procured after Glenridge Middle School construction has started. I was told this by, by the school board. You know, I guess where I'm at is, is there some way to continue from a permitting standpoint? I don't know if it's a hold on issuing the use and occupancy of the building, something to that extent that will allow this construction project to continue forward, knowing that, you know, the school's not going to be open for, for several years and knowing that we're, the school board and Park and Planning are in current negotiations on several properties. I know, I was not aware that, that they had not, not responded to parks. We have been involved in some of the, the language of, of the write-up, so I do know that they've been working on that. I'm not sure as to when that is something that will be returned for legal counsel review. Jonathan, do you want to add anything to what I have to say?
Yes, I, yes, I do. This is Jonathan Hill with Gremmon Parker Architects, working for Prince George's County Public Schools. We're the design architects for Glenridge Middle School.
Looks good.
Our understanding of the term sheet is that the term sheet requires the agreement to be completed prior to the start of construction, not to the issuance of the permit. And that's, that's an important point for the school board because the issuance of the permit will allow them to bid the project to contractors and encumber the contractors, which triggers funding relief. So, uh, that, and that is the, the root of the objection to the term 12. The school board wants the permit to be released so that they can visit the project and hire the contractor. We agree that, my understanding is that the school board agrees that construction is not to start until all the terms are then finalized.
Um, let me, let me jump in at this point.
And I have that directly from the, from the project.
Okay, so I'm not sure, you know, I know what your, you've stated your respective positions in, in terms of what you do for a living and also what your positions are on the, on the recommendations. We have our legal counsel who has interpreted the agreement, but I will tell you this. This is a mandatory review. So the conditions have, the recommendations have a different meaning than they would normally have in an application. So we will talk to you a little bit offline, but what we will commit to do, I don't think if we go forward with the conditions as written, I don't think it hurts you, but what we will, we have always had a good relationship with the Prince George's County Public Schools. We, we work together on countless matters and are, we hope to continue working together. This, this land exchange is absolutely crucial and each side has their positions and we This, this land exchange is absolutely crucial and each side has their positions and we, neither side can give up their leverage either. However, what we will commit to do is have attorney to attorney and maybe leadership to leadership talk and work through this. I don't think these, these recommendations here in the mandatory referral hurt you at all because they are merely recommendations, they're not conditions precedent. So, but we can, but we, what we will commit to do is continue to work with you because we want to, first of all, the school looks beautiful, so kudos to you. Secondly, we know that we-
Thank you very much.
We know that we need more schools in Prince George County, so this is a new school which will be adjacent to the elementary school, that's a good thing. So we will commit to working with you on this and, and working with our attorneys to see where we are on both sides on this, to see how much we can, how we can expedite this. Okay? Mr. Fritz, are you okay?
Very good, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so does anyone have anything else to add? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we accept all 13 of staff's recommendations and approve the transmittal of MR-1901F to the Prince George County Public Schools. Attention, Lewis Wilson Senior Facilities Administration.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Is there a discussion? Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duoner?
Aye.
The ayes have it 4-0. With that, I'm going to turn to item 8, followed by item 10, 9, and 5.
You don't sign those anymore.
Oh yeah, that's right, okay. Um, let me make sure we have everyone we need on item 8. Ms. Osay, are you on?
I'm on, Madam Chair, thank you.
Wonderful. Bobby Ray, are you on?
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Ms. Howerton? I see you, I don't know why you couldn't, we couldn't hear you before in the last case.
Good morning, Madam Chair, this is Brian Barnett with the Transportation. Judith is on the line, we're trying to figure out what's going on.
That's okay, okay. So if need be, are you able to handle this? If need be?
Yes, if need be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stabler, Dr. Stabler, are you on?
I'm here to cover this matter.
Okay, that's Mr. Berger, I couldn't hear you, is that Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then we have Benjamin Levy?
Yes, hi, Ben Levy here.
Okay, wonderful. And that concludes my sign-up list. So, Ms. Osay, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Christina Settler, coordinator of county wide planning division. Item 8 is a mandatory referral application MR2017F, Phase 2 of a proposed solar array development. The proposed solar application is being reviewed in accordance to the land use article section 20-301 through 305 of the Maryland Underway Code and section 27-294 of the Prince George County zoning ordinance. A Phase 2 solar array application was reviewed by the planning board in 2019, MR1907F, on the south side of this application. This presentation will focus on Phase 2, but will discuss some aspects of Phase 1 site as they relate to the general layout and future development of the two project sites. The Phase 2 application is to install solar arrays on 109 acre side on a ladder 27 acre side on St. Bernabas Episcopal Church to produce approximately 400 kilowatt in nominal power. We can begin the slide one. The site is located in the western portion of the county, shown in the red circle dot in planning area 76A, council district 7. Next slide. This shows an outline of the church property, which is approximately 27 acres, it's a county historic site. It shows the blue area, which shows Phase 2, is the application under discussion today. Phase 1 is the one which is below Phase 2. Both faces are located on a 27 acre ladder, there's a Prince George County historic site, St. Bernabas Church property is currently approved with two church buildings, a school structure, and a storage shed. Next slide. This shows the vicinity of the project area highlighted in red, which is the entire church property showing Phase 1 and Phase 2. Next slide. The natural features map shows the site's south corner, where as shown in the previous slide, it's relatively flat with no impact on existing environmental features. Next slide. This slide shows the existing zoning on an entire 27 acres, which is a rural residential zone. Next slide. This slide shows the master plan right away with the red showing the St. Bernabas Road, which is an arterial road, which is south of the project area outline in blue. Next slide. This is a site plan that shows both Phase 1 and Phase 2, and you can see the arrow with the red dot on Phase 2, and Phase 1 being immediately below the site, so the two project sides faces are related. Next slide. This is the landscape plan that shows again Phase 1 north of Phase, Phase 2 north of Phase 1, and a proposed 20-foot buffer, landscape buffer around the entire Phase 1 and Phase 2 with a fence as well. It is access to both project faces from the St. Bernabas Road to the south corner of the site. Next slide. The proposed project faces are consistent with a 2018 solar energy guidelines approved by the planning board. This slide shows Phase 2, which outlines the construction, operation, and maintenance of Phase 1 and 2 of the solar project site. Next slide. This is the outreach that the planning board sent notification letters to adjoining property owners and civic associations on August 14. We received an email from Ms. Mantra outlining some issues and the applicant responded to her satisfaction. There were no further questions after the applicant's response. The applicant had a meeting on September 3 to discuss the project with the community. Next slide. There are six staff recommendations in both phase, in Phase 1. The first one required the applicant to file a historic area work permit since the Phase 2 is in a historic, that's county designated historic site. The other three are from Urban Design discussing the need to stagger the planting that are recommended on the buffer around the entire Phase 1 and Phase 2. The last two, the next slide please. Are from fire EMS, requesting the applicant to contact and work with fire and emergency service in, as a work on construction of the site. Phase 2 application has been reviewed for conformance to the planning board's adapted uniform standards for mandatory review as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt a staff comment and transmit them to the applicant. This concludes staff presentation and I'm available for any questions from the planning board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Osay. Let's see if the board has any questions. Have you, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Osay, no questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Duoner?
Yeah, I have a comment and then questions. On the site plan that had the Phase 1 and Phase 2 slides and then the slide also after that with the landscape plan. When I download that PDF and zoom in, I can't see anything. It's completely blurred. The resolution is not high enough for me to even look and see like what the notes are for the specific planning details, landscape plan. Or if I go up and I try and look at the slide before that, that had the Phase 1 and Phase 2, I have no idea what the green stuff is supposed to say. I think it's a former array, but it's-
Let me, okay.
My comment is that I think we need to work on resolution, on picture resolution. Because when you're saving the PDFs, you can save very high resolution and I guess they'd be done in really high resolution. But it's, it's not helpful to have any of that detail if you can't tell what it is. So if we can just do that in the future, that would be helpful. Because my question was regarding the landscaping, I know that we've got the buffer in there, but I didn't see anything in the slides or in the staff report about potential pollinators or anything else that might go underneath the solar panels or any kind of like natural vegetation that could go underneath the solar panel, panels to hold the soil in place and prevent potential erosion. Do you know if there's any plans for that?
Mr. Duoner, this, it's not an agricultural area to require that. According to the 2018 solar energy guidelines, it's RA zones and OS, this property is in a rural residential zone.
Okay, I mean, still, like, I don't know if there's any, is there any plans for pollinators or anything else, or is this only going to be solar panels on top of the ground?
No, there isn't, in it.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Duoner. So, let me turn to, I don't know if Ms. How-
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, Ms. Howerton, you're on? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did you have anything to, did you have anything to add?
No, I didn't have anything to add, thank you.
Mr. Berger, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to Mr. Levy. Good morning.
Madam Chairman and members of the board. We don't have very much to add, but we do want to thank you for having us here today. We do want to clarify that we are applying for the Phase 2 of this solar project and not Phase 1. I did want to clarify one thing, that was from Ms. Osay's opening comment, it's 0.9 acres, relatively close to 1 acre, the land area. I also want to clarify that a lot of the solar panels that are planned in this area were originally planned to be placed in the Phase 1 area, in that south area, but since we ended up not, you know, I guess you would call it eliminating the removal of trees from our scope, so basically preserving the trees, there's so much shading from those trees, we kind of lost system size, and that's kind of how Phase 2 came about. And then I will say that we agree with the staff's recommendations. At the end of the, the staff memo, there are six staff recommendations specifically, and we are okay with all six of those. And I will also make a comment that there are approximately 18 different species of plants, which I believe are all native plants, that are in this very, very detailed landscape buffer plan, and I will be glad to provide anybody upon the staff and the board with a more resolved version of this landscape plan. But I, because I'm not a biologist or tree person, I exactly self-described, I couldn't say whether these plants have flowers which would be considered pollinators for bees, but I assume most of them have flowering that happens, and because they're native, they're probably very conducive to plant and, and animal species that would be living in this region. So that may be some additional, you know, food for thought related to the pollinator comment. And besides that, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levy. I appreciate your clarifications, although I'm, I don't know that we were confused because it seemed like the staff report says it's 0.9 acres and it indicates that it's Phase 2. The other part of, the other part of it with regard to the planting, I mean, may perhaps you can talk offline with Ms. Osay and whatnot and for all of us, because this is, this issue has come up before, so we can start looking at that to some extent in the future. Okay.
Yep.
Let's see if there are any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Duoner?
No questions, thank you, and appreciate the clarification on the trees as well.
Okay, thank you, and your candor. Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the recommend, the six recommendations made by staff and approve the transmittal of MR-2017F to Mr. Benjamin Levy. And thank you again for joining us, Mr. Levy.
Okay, we have a motion, but seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duoner?
Aye.
Okay.
All ready?
Okay, we have, the ayes have it 4-0. The next item is item 10. Let me do a check to see that we have everyone. It's a detailed site plan, 1204301 West Valley Town Center Special Purpose. Mr. Hurlbut, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Ms. Kozak?
Yes, present.
Ms. Camp?
Present.
Ms. Connor? Bobby Ray? That concludes my sign-up sheet. Was there anyone else on on this?
No ma'am.
Okay, so with that-
Good morning, Karen, Carter is here, I believe I signed up as well.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have anyone, excuse me? Is she? Oh yes, I'm sorry, and, yes, and Mr. Bruce, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my, miss, thank you, Ms. Carter. And Mr. Bruce, are you on? Sean Bruce? Oh, there he is. Mr. Bruce?
Yes ma'am.
You're on, okay.
Hello?
Before we start, thank you, Mr. Bruce, and before we start seeing as how it's September 17th, let's all say happy birthday to Ms. Marba Jo Camp.
Thank you, Madam Chair, all remember things, always do.
I never forgot it, okay. Happy birthday, Ms. Camp, okay. With that, Mr. Hurlbut, are you on? I mean, you're on, but can you get started? I'm sorry, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Hurlbut with Urban Design Section. The project before you is item 10, detailed site plan DSP 12043-01 West Valley Center Special Purpose. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the special purpose DSP for two conditions, one which affects the timing of the community building in open space 2 within the West Valley East Development, or section of the development, and also the school site on parcel 25. As a matter of housekeeping, you should have a staff memo dated September 14, 2020, as well as an email from the Board of Education. This memo clarifies the terms of the revised conditions, and the email is the Board of Education's confirmation to those terms.
We do have that, thank you.
Slide 2-
So one will be staff exhibit 1 and the second one will be staff exhibit 2 from Ms. Diana Wiles, okay, thank you.
Slide 2 is the general location map, which shows this site is located in the central portion of Prince George County, planning area 78, council district 6. Slide 3, the vicinity map, the DSP is located at the intersection of Maryland 4 and Melwood Road. The special purpose DSP covers the whole 470 acres. The special purpose DSP covers the whole 478 acres of the Westphalia Town Center development outlined in red. Slide four, the zoning map shows the property's zone mixed-use transportation oriented, or MXT zone. Slide five, the overlay map shows the property is also within the military installation, or MIO zone. Slide six is an aerial photo which shows the property is currently developed with 346 townhouses in the first phase of the development, but the property is largely undeveloped at this time and wooded, although the property to the east of the existing development has since been masqueraded from the time of this photo. Slide seven, the site plan shows the site has varied topography. Slide eight, the master plan, roadways contained within the property include three major collectors, one collector, and two arterials. Slide nine is a bird's eye aerial which shows the adjacent Parkside Development to, in the upper left of this slide, an existing single family to the right, and Joint Base Andrews just off to the bottom left. Slide 10, Westphalia, the DSP is located in the Westphalia Sector Plan and makes up most of the core, edge, and fringe areas of the Sector Plan, shown here in red, pink, and purple. Slide 11, the currently approved CSP is shown here. The applicant of this application is Westphalia East LLC, who recently received approval for DSP 19009, Westphalia East, which is shown outlined in blue. And the subject's school site, which is subject of one of the conditions, is marked by the star, which is being amended on behalf of the master developer, Westphalia Town Center, which seeks to change the trigger for dedication, which is allowed by the preliminary plan of subdivision condition to be done as part of this special purpose DSP. Slide 12, the applicant, Westphalia East, plans to propose the change in the timing of the community building, which will be located in the gray box in the center of the screen noted by the red arrow, which will be coming forward through a separate DSP amendment. Slide 13, all of the previous approved conditions of DSP 12043 remain in full effect with the following revised language for condition four. The DSP was previously approved with 600, or DSP 19009 was previously approved with 655 units. The condition changes the timing of the community building to pertain only to the Westphalia East development and the units within it. In doing so, the condition is modified to say the 150th, at the time of the 150th building permit, dwelling units in the Westphalia East shall be fully bonded at the 250th, the building shall begin construction, and at the 400th building permit, it should be open to residents. Staff is recommending a further change to the condition, which the applicant has agreed to, to remove the word "single family" from each of these sentences, as the development does include two-family dwellings. Slide 14, preliminary plan, the master plant, or the master developer, Westphalia Town Center, in working with the Board of Education, has proposed to modify the timing of the dedication of the school site property on parcel 25, or to provide an alternative site upon the school board's request. Slide 15, you should have a copy of staff's memo dated September 14th, which recommends changes to define the applicant as the master plan developer, Westphalia Town Center, and to ensure that the Board of Education and the applicant will have input on the alternative site if one is chosen. The applicant and the school board, the Board of Education, have been made aware of staff's changes and are in agreement. Staff recommends approval with the recommended changes in this presentation and the staff's memo. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlbut. Let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
Questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorn?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, Ms. Camp, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. I had my little speech put together, but Mr. Hurlbut did such a fantastic job, so I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege or something else. I just wanted to say, oh, and for the record, I'm sorry, Marba-Joe Camp representing the applicant. I wanted to thank the staff, Mr. Hurlbut in particular, for his hard work in trying to navigate both our Westphalia East applicant and the master developer of the Westphalia Town Center, and for coming up with a way for us to be able to do a centralized, a centralized special purpose DSP. I wanted to note, because you probably see it in your packet, the different numbers, and one of the issues that arose is that when this project started, there was one applicant owner, and then they sold the property, so that as you see the numbers, the original numbers would have only allowed us to get to 50 permits before we would have had to begin the bonding and the process. So this just gives us time to get our feet wet and be able to provide the amenities. And I also wanted to reiterate that the school site is to the master developer, but we had been asked to include that in the special purpose, which made sense, so whoever's the owner, and that is not us, will be coming back as it relates to parcel 25. And then I just want to end by complimenting, I've already complimented the staff work on this, but I had an issue earlier this week trying to get to community planning, wasn't sure how to get into the office, and I called Madam Chair, your office, and Ms. Jones got right on it to help me, and I wanted to say publicly thank you to her, and then Mr. Vilage got on it even further, and then community planning. And I have to tell you, when it's difficult to get into places, the way that your staff stood up and helped in that process is much appreciated, and I wanted to say thank you for their, for their effort, and let them know how much it was appreciated. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Camp. Ms. Jones is sitting right here, I see Mr. Vilage is on the line, and we're really, we're really, really trying, these are very difficult times and challenging times, but we keep endeavoring to rise to the occasion. We may fall short sometimes, but it's not because we're not trying.
But you didn't move plans, so.
Okay, so, but we're giving it our all, so thank you for that. And let's see, we'll come back to you at the end. So, Mr. Bruce, do you have, oh, let me see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but happy birthday, Ms. Camp.
Commissioner Dorn?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce, do you have anything to add? Hold on, we're scrolling down for you, yeah, okay. Anything to add?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carter?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me to just take the time to say just a few words. I'll keep it brief, because I understand you guys have a lot of work to do. I just wanted to state that in general, I do support what is being proposed, and I'm excited to actually see this project finally begin to move forward. I do want to raise a few concerns that I and some of the current residents of Westphalia Town Center have about the modifications to condition four. The increase in the number of permits, or the pushing out of the improvements of the public space in the community center means that residents will not be able to realize or have access to amenities within the community, and it'll delay that even further, not just for current residents, but for potential residents that will purchase homes here, and that is a concern for us. And while we're reasonable and we understand that there is a need for the push out of the permits, that maybe we could maybe reconsider the number of permits that we're increasing our triggers to, potentially reduce those by 50, or something of that nature. For us, it's really about maintaining some type of accountability and open, transparent communication with both the developer and the builder, and we feel that by really thinking about these triggers, it allows us the opportunity to do that. And so that's all that I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carter.
Madam Chair, is there a way to respond to that?
Yes, I was coming, yes, yes, absolutely, you always get to close out, so don't forget the, okay, the applicant closes out. So let me see if the board has any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorn?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, and because, and thank you, Ms. Camp, you'll be next. I was wondering if you had communication, I want to make sure you have Ms. Carter's information, which we can, we won't air it here, but we can get it to you if you don't already have it. So, Ms. Camp, you can respond.
Yes, thank you, and I thank Ms. Carter, because I did fail to say so. On, on the 14th of September, we had a virtual meeting with the Westphalia Town Center community, and we had over 100 residents participate in that virtual meeting. Even though we, this was only to deal with the triggers, we actually did a full presentation before the community, talking to them about what we intended to do on the architecture for the units, and we also discussed with them the concept plan for the community building as well as the recreational amenities. At the conclusion of that presentation, each individual was allowed, if they wanted to, to submit, I guess, questions to me directly, and there were no comments in the chat, I'm told. I received two questions, which I promptly responded to, and none of them had to do with the triggers. I do want to say that part of the reason that we selected the numbers that we did is just the permitting process itself and the interaction between DEPA and park and planning, and wanted to have a number that would allow us to be able to pull the permits in a timely fashion, which these numbers do allow us to do, and to service the needs of both the community and the builders. And let me end by saying, I also, at the conclusion of that virtual meeting, made it very clear that we would come back to talk about the architecture, to come back each phase as we move forward on the DSP for the community building and recreational facilities, and also made it clear, as you all have seen me in the past, I offered to come as many times as they wanted me to, so that there would be transparency in any information, and I gave them my cell and my email. So everybody has it, it's up on the website for the whole community, so anybody that wants to find me, they know how to find me, and I'm happy to continue that process of community outreach. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Camp. Ms. Carter, I don't know if you were, to what extent you were part of that, and I don't want to give out numbers on, you know, virtually, but she said you can go to the website. And Ms. Carter, if you could please identify yourself on the record, when we call on people, I just said Ms. Carter, but if you could identify yourself, your full name and address, that would be helpful, or your full name, your full name at least.
Thank you, Karen Carter, 5526 Glover Park Drive, Upper Marlboro, Maryland 20772. And I just wanted to clarify that, and thank Ms. Marba-Joe for her presentation on Monday night, and that I was there, and I, and I do have the presentation, and we were unable to communicate with her because the chat was disabled and all of that jazz, so we weren't able to submit questions or ask questions. And there was some confusion about when, 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 kind of what that turnaround would be, because we were under the impression that we needed to sign up to speak at the planning board hearing by Tuesday at noon, rather than Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. So this was our, so we just wanted to make sure that we had all of our, our bases covered, you know, and that we weren't missing out on any type of opportunity to have these conversations with you. So this was, my intent was not to slight or imply that you have not been helpful and that you have not communicated with us. This is simply our concerns, and making sure that we have those concerns on the record, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carter. So I see that you mentioned that the chat was disabled, but you can have continued conversations. She, Ms. Camp indicated she's willing to have additional conversations, and that can be arranged via the website. Ms. Camp, anything else?
My email is on there, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Email and telephone number is available. And one other thing, the anticipated date for opening so forth is 2022 for the community building.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, let me get back to Ms. Carter for one quick second, just so you know, you were under the impression that it would be, that you would have to sign up by Tuesday. That is coming, so I just wanted to remind, I announced this early on, but that is coming. As of now, the time to sign up to speak and to, and to submit exhibits is Wednesday. We have one more week of that. The next planning board after that, if anyone plans to be on for October 1st, you will have to sign up by that Tuesday. So, and submit exhibits by that Tuesday, so I just wanted to get that on the record again. So that's where you got that from. So, okay. So always, in accordance with our rules of procedure, the planning, the applicant goes last. So with that, if there are no other questions from the board, we will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-12043-01, along with the two conditions as outlined in staff's report with the following amendments. First amendment to condition 1.4, paragraphs 2 and 3, removing the word "single family" from both of those paragraphs, and condition number 2 as modified and as outlined in staff exhibit number 1.
We have a motion? Commissioner, Vice Chair Bailey seconded. Vice Chair Bailey, is there any discussion? Vice Chair Bailey?
Just one point.
Okay, okay, is this Mr. Hurlbut?
This is Jeremy Hurlbut, just one point of clarification. Single family does appear in the first paragraph as well, I believe Ms. Washington said the second and third.
I did, thank you so much, Mr. Hurlbut. So all, all three paragraphs will remove "single family." Thank you.
And the seconder accepts that, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Bailey, okay. There's no discussion, no additional discussion, I'm calling for the vote. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorn?
Vote aye.
The ayes have it for a zero. Okay, we are coming down the stretch here. Thank you. We have item nine and item five left. I'm gonna take item nine now, depending on how this goes, you know, we may continue on with item five, or else we have to break for lunch, so let's, item nine, excuse me. So let me make sure we have everyone we need. Ms. Hassan?
Yes, I'm available.
Wonderful. Mr. Ray?
Present.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Ms. Finch?
Present.
Ms. Howerton?
I'm here.
Ms. Sinkowski? Okay, Ms., oh, okay, I need help here.
Mr. Srinivasan.
Srinivasan, that's what I was going to say, Mr. Srinivasan. Okay, wonderful. Okay, thank you. And then we do have an email and site plan exhibit for the record. So this is mandatory referral for Brandywine Sand and Gravel Solar Project. Ms. Hassan, you're on.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good morning. Members, for the record, Fatima Hassan, Special Project Section, Countywide Planning. Item 9 is a mandatory referral review for MR 1941F, Brandywine Sand and Gravel Solar Project. It was reviewed pursuant to the Land Use Article Section 20-301 through 305 of the Maryland Annotated Code and Section 27-294 of the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. It is for a 6-megawatt solar array, and it has been changed from what was originally submitted to you. Instead of having two parcels, the proposed project has been reduced to one, parcel 58, but maintaining the same total energy production on the one parcel. And the applicant, Representative Stephanie Sinkowski, is available to present on the changes. So I would like to go over the basics of the proposed project at this time. Next slide, please. The site is located in Councilmanic District 9, as shown on this map. Slide 3, please. This is parcel 58, also referred to as Mary Pit, which, due to the changes, will encompass the entire proposed project of 6 megawatts. Parcel 134, which was proposed to hold 2 of the 6 megawatts, is supposed to be removed from the project. Slide 5, please. Also 58 was historically a sand and gravel pit, and is currently a clean earth fill, excepting only clean soil with very little concrete, brick, or rock. Parcel 58 is bounded on the north by a Pepco right-of-way, on the northeast by a crossroad trail, and a partially wooded parcel, and with fully wooded parcels to the south and east. Can we skip to slide 7, please? Parcel 58 is zone OS. Next slide, please. All right, parcel 58 contains some stormwater detention ponds, open water or wetland areas, and a floodplain easement is on a part of this parcel, but it's undisturbed by the proposed solar array layout. The parcel is classified as a brownfield or an industrial commercial site identified as contaminated or polluted. Thus, the project is proposed in the number-one preferred location, according to the Solar Energy Systems Guidelines, as the most suitable sighting preference. These are highly disturbed soils and are not suitable for agriculture. However, the applicant has proposed to maintain a dual-use land design concept by planting and maintaining an erasious cover with pollinator value. Can we skip to slide 10, please? Crossroad Trail is listed as a collective facility in the master plan of transportation. Slide 11, please. This is the original proposed site map, showing the two parcels with a solar array on each one. At this point, I will defer to the applicant to present the revised project and the conceptual layout on the next slide that the applicant sent to you, and I'll go over the recommendations afterwards. Next slide, please. Stephanie, would you like to explain?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Sinkowski. I'm with Summit Ridge Energy, the solar project developer. As Ms. Hassan mentioned, we've revised the solar project from spanning two parcels to only one parcel, parcel 58, which is a 112-acre brownfield. It is a disturbed land, so it's top of towards sighting preference for solar projects. This is a 6-megawatt AC solar project, which is broken into four interconnections with Pepco. It will be a single-axis tracker community solar project, and we expect to provide electricity to over 1,000 residential households within Pepco Maryland Utility Territory. All of the equipment for the solar project would be removed at the end of the project's life. The solar project's limit of disturbance will be approximately 30 acres of land. We expect to clear just over 8 acres of trees, half of which are already within the existing MDE surface mining permits limit of disturbance. As a reference, the updated plan reduces clearing from approximately 16 acres down to 8 acres. And we will conserve and reinforce on-site to the extent possible, but as Ms. Hassan mentioned, there is a floodplain on the southern portion of the parcel, so we think that if we're, will be conserved off-site. But we will comply with Prince George's County's Woodland and Wild-type Wildlife Habitat Conservation Ordinance. Terms of setbacks, the project is over 700 feet setback from Crossroad Trail, so there's no visibility from Crossroad Trail, which is a scenic and historic road. And the setback is also over 450 feet from the closest residential property. So that's all I have for this project. I'm happy to take any questions that the board might have.
Okay, so let's go back to Ms. Hassan at this time, and then we'll see if the board members have any questions before we go turn to Mr. Horn. Okay.
Okay, next slide, please. Regarding the applicant's comments, all adjustments now proposed can be addressed through approval of the natural resource inventory and the revised TCP-2 for this site, which are steps to be done after this point in time. The staff has also offered these recommendations to utilize black vinyl clad chain link fencing without barbed wire, and to use full optic cutoff lighting fixtures if lighting is proposed for this project in the future. This application has been reviewed for conformance to the planning board's adopted uniform standards for mandatory referral review as set forth in the technical staff report. Staff does recommend that the planning board adopt the staff comments to the extent that they apply to the revised project and transmit. This concludes staff presentation.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hassan. Okay, so let's see, let me see if the board has any questions of you, Ms. Hassan, or Ms. Sinkowski. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dooner?
Yeah, some of it may be more for the applicant. I wasn't totally clear how the 2 megawatts were moving from onto the other parcel. Like, when I was looking at the slide 11 that we have, and then the addition that was sent in by the applicant, looks like it was almost like the same thing on the parcel on the left, in terms of like the layout of the solar panels, like, I couldn't really tell very well. I also wanted just to find out if they're, if they're moving them from the right parcel to the left parcel, if they're going to go from the fixed tilt to the single-axis tilt. And then just the final question that I was wondering about, most of the stuff that we see in approvals that we have are limited to the 2-megawatt developments, and this is a stick, so it's triple the size. I was wondering, is that because of a state restriction that's at the 2 megawatts? Because I know Montgomery County has a 2-megawatt county restriction, but I just wasn't sure how you get up to the sticks, because we just typically haven't seen projects of that size. But I'm glad to see that it's utilizing a brownfield and taking advantage of that, and providing an erasious cover.
Hi, yes, I can address those questions. So the, in us moving from the 2 megawatts on parcel 134 over to parcel 58, what we did was reduce the distance between rows of the solar panels, and we also increased the wattage of the panels from the original proposed panels. So that's how we are able to fit 6 megawatts within the same limit of disturbance. And then your second question pertained to, I'm sorry, can you remind me again?
Just on the state requirements, I think it might be at a county level, not a state level, that there's a limit of 2 megawatts per project. And I think that at least exists in Montgomery County, but I thought our county may have had it as well, and that's why we were maybe seeing the smaller projects. So I just was wondering if you could clarify, this is one of the bigger projects that we see, and most of the stuff we see is 2 megawatts.
Exactly, yep. So the state runs the community solar program, and they actually have a 2-megawatt limitation on most projects. The exception is when you're building on brownfields, which this project is classified as, in which case we are allowed to co-locate up to 3 2-megawatt projects. So in our case, we have 4 interconnections with Pepco, and that's due to the feeders that they have to bring to the site and their limits, but we are, you know, below the 6-megawatt threshold for brownfields.
Okay, because of your first answer, I'm going to just assume that everything is on the single-axis tracker?
Yes, you're right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, then? All right, Mr. Horn?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board, for the record. Arthur Horn, Los Angeles City, Horn and Largo, Maryland. On behalf of the applicant, I see FTS Maryland Solar LLC, you know, Summit Ridge Energy, you've heard from Ms. Sinkowski, who's a development manager, and earlier you called out on the roll call, Mr. Serenza Hassan, pardon me if I hacked that up a little bit. He's the Vice President of Development Engineering. This is my favorite type of case, Madam Chairman, because I don't really have anything to add, because Ms. Hassan did a great job of explaining, and certainly Ms. Sinkowski, who's the development manager, has laid out the situation. It is a request for use of a brownfield, as Ms. Hassan said, is the number-one priority. As a matter of fact, when we were, before you previously, for a solar field in this general area, these properties were identified as locations that would be ideal for some solar farm use, and fortunately, the applicant was able to take advantage of that and use it. So the conditions that set forth by the staff, even though they were applying to 2 sites, they applied to this one as well, so the applicant is supportive of the conditions and would hope that the planning board would in fact support this mandatory referral as is outlined.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horn. And you said it's your favorite kind of case, it's kind of working for us, too. So with that, I don't think there's anything, there's nothing else to add. Mr. Srinivasan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
If all the questions have been addressed, then I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are good to go. Is there a motion? Or do we need any clarification? Or you're good? Okay.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the two recommendations as put forward by staff and approve transmittal of MR-1941F to Miss Carrie Neary with ICFTS MD Solar LLC.
Echo, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion for Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Dooner?
But I, I'll just add to discussion, just to emphasize, thank you to the applicant and Mr. Horn for finding the repurposing on the brownfield site. I know these are difficult sites to redevelop or repurpose, and this is, this is great. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the I's have it 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is Mr. Lynch. I need Mr. Zhang and Mr. Lynch, and there are others, but I'm trying to get an estimate because I'm, and I need to talk with the board, too, to figure out, I'm trying to get an estimate of how long this case may be, and to check the temperature of our board to see if everyone's hungry, or do we, this is our last case, do we want to keep going, or do you want a break for lunch?
I suggest we keep going.
Okay. But you know, but you know, we got certain people. Okay.
I'm looking at her, try to decide.
Yeah, Ms. Washington?
Well, I'm fine with keeping going, but can we take maybe like a 5-minute break?
Okay, let's do that. Okay, and then, okay, let's take a 5-minute break, 5 to 10-minute break, that's fine, because, that's good. Okay, Mr. Dooner, you're good with that? Okay, all right, let's all do that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Lynch will be right back. Okay.
Thank you.
Everything's all.
I just need to check everybody else. I know we all snuck off to the refrigerator. So the planning board is back in session, I want to make sure that we have everyone we need. I see that we have Vice Chair Bailey present, Commissioner Washington present, Commissioner Dooner present. Okay, we have Mr. Lynch, who was presenting in this particular case. This is item 5, detailed site plan 20021, Potomac Energy Holdings. Do we have Mr. Zhang? Okay, we'll have to, okay, so let me make sure we have everyone else, we'll come back to him. Glenn Burton, you're on, right? If not, Glenn Burton? I have to unmute him.
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, okay. Brian Barnett Woods?
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Andrew Lor? Sean Bruce, are you on this one?
Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, I'm coming, okay.
This is Henry speaking, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you're back, okay, no worries. Sean Bruce, are you on this one, too? Mr. Bruce? Was that a mistake, is he on this one, or is just the last one?
Yeah, I think I'm mistaken, Madam Chair.
You are on both, you are here, Mr., oh, it's a mistake? Or not a mistake?
Yeah, this is, it tells a mistake.
Okay, that's, okay. All right. Okay, so then that's everybody, and then we have exhibit, we have proposed revised conditions. So I'm going to turn to Mr. Zhang, so you can start. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Henry Zhang, observing line section. Item 5, in front of you is a detailed site plan, was 3,172 food and beverages store, a gas station, and 1,355 square foot car wash. Next slide, please. The site is in Plany Area 70, in the Council District 4. Next slide, please. Slide number 3. Specifically, this site is on the north side of MD 193, which is Gribbel Road, in the northeastern quadrant of its intersection with Aerospace Drive. Next slide, please. The site is in the I-1 Zone, which is a light industrial zone, and is surrounded on two sides by the I-1 Zone property. I think to the north is a car wash, and beyond is a large office. To the east is a consolidated storage store, and then to the west and south by the right-of-way of Aerospace Drive and Greenbelt Road respectively. And next slide please. This air photo show, the site has, with the existing gas station and also a convenience store, and then I think the proposal of this detailed site plan is to raise the entire site and replace with the new gas station. Next slide please. This is the site map show, the site basically is general leveled, you see two footprint, two building footprints on this side. Next slide please, it's a master plan right-of-way map, which shows the Greenbelt Road is arterial roadway. Next slide please. Once again, is a bird's eye view, with the site outlined in blue, and then you see the building, existing buildings on the side. Next slide please. This is the site plan, basically shows the new layout of the site. This site has an approval history, which can be dated back to 1970, when the site was rezoned to the I-1 Zone, and then the existing gas station was built several years later as a community use in the I-1 Zone. In 1998, District Council changed the zoning code and then make the gas station a special exception in the I-1 Zone. In 2015, District Council approved special exception 4757 by gas station, car wash, and the food and beverage store on this property. Actually, that approval exactly the same schemes in term of development included in this detailed site plan. Along with that special exception approval, there are two departures. One is the departure from parking and loading spaces, DPLS 415, and also departure from sign design standards, DSDS 688, which are all valid on this site, and then the applicant also plan to use those two departures in this application. In 2017, the council, or District Council adopted, you know, a new council bill, which amended the zoning code one more time, to require a detailed site plan for gas station and food and beverage store in the I-1 Zone, excuse me. That's why the applicant fired this DSP, because the prior special exception work got built. That's why we have this DSP in front of us. And this site also has a valid stone water magic concept approval, which will be valid through July 6, 2020, excuse, 21st. Next slide please. This is the landscape plan, which showed the building of the food and beverage store and the car wash is located to the rear of the site, but with the canopy fronting Greenbelt Road, and all the major elevations fronting Greenbelt Road, and also with the car wash, the main elevation fronting Aerospace Drive. Slide 11, which is the elevation, basically that shows a dash-in as a food and beverage store here, and the building design in a very contemporary way, and with, with, you know, a lot of bricks, and they also feature a flat roof, three-part elevation composition, and the rectangular footprint. The car wash building, next slide please. This, I'm sorry, this is the signage for dash-in, I will talk about later on. And then the car wash building, which also use a combination of some brick and, but with fiber cement panels on four sides. The main elevation, as stated, is fronting the west, which is Aerospace Drive, and then is designed with a pre-caston veneer base, and also with windows in the middle. And then those two buildings are designed in a coordinated way and are acceptable. I mentioned, I think the last slide, slide 12, which is the signage, actually, this site has one freestanding side sign, which are covered by the DSDS previously approved. And then in this DSP, one building mounted sign has been proposed, you can see on this slide, slide 13, for the car wash, and then two building mounted sign has been proposed for the food and beverage store, both on the south and western elevation of the dash-in. Next slide please. Slide 14, which shows a gas station canopy, feature shells, franchise, yellow facial with illuminated red bar and the panel with yellow logo. And then those are all the slides I have, and this detailed site plan has been reviewed for conformance with the requirements of I-1 Zone and also site design guideline of the zoning ordinance. A detailed discussion provided on page 67 of the staff report. This detailed site plan is also consistent with the requirements of the landscape manual, woodland, and white light habitat conservation ordinance, and the tree canopy coverage ordinance. No agency opposed approval of this detailed site plan. The applicant has submitted an exhibit, which proposed two minor revisions, that have been discussed with the staff, and then we currently agreed, you know, we agreed upon on one revision, and then we still have another one outstanding, I will leave that to the applicant. Our design staff recommends that planning board adopt the finding of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP-20021 for Potomac Energy Holding Shells LLC, subject to condition, one condition, but we have five subconditions on page 10 of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Let's see if there are any questions, Madam Vice Chair.
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, you're on.
Good morning. For the record, Dan Lynch with Mac May Housick here on behalf of the applicant. Here today on this detailed site plan for a dash-in to be located at the corner of Aerospace Drive and Greenbelt Road. As you will remember, and as indicated by staff during the presentation, this came before you back in 2015, when the applicant had filed a special exception and departures for this site. The only change between what was reviewed and approved by you back in 2015 is that we are proposing architecture that reflects other dash-ins that had been constructed in Prince George's County as well as in the metropolitan area. And that leads us to how we are here today. Unfortunately, my clients called me in the spring of this year for the purpose of having the architecture revised, and that is the architecture that was approved in conjunction with the special exception, at which point I had the, I had to break the bad news to them, that the law had changed and they would be required to obtain a detailed site plan to move forward with the construction of this site, which was unfortunate because they were probably six days away from pulling a permit to construct this site, and the only thing that was really holding them up is their desire to change the architecture on the buildings. But again, the only change between what was approved by, what was reviewed by you back in 2015, eventually approved by the District Council, is the architecture being proposed today, which I consider to be an upgrade over that which was originally approved back in 2015. As indicated by Mr. Zhang, we're in general agreement with the staff's recommendations and conditions. The only change that we're requesting really goes to conditions B and C, and one B and C, and those conditions basically require us to provide a five-foot wide sidewalk connection between Aerospace Drive and Greenbelt Road and the food and beverage store. And as staff will probably acknowledge, we've been trying to work with them on providing those connections, but there's much more to it than just putting in a sidewalk and putting in crosswalks. We also have to address, for example, ADA requirements, and for example, as I told Mr. Zhang time and time again, one of the connections that they had originally requested from Aerospace Drive and along the front of the proposed car wash and eventually the C store, we couldn't make work from an ADA standpoint. And so we basically told Mr. Zhang that we're having difficulty making that connection. The same goes for the connection from the food and beverage store down to Greenbelt Road. The suggestion has been made that we run that connection down along the eastern property line, and then eventually hooking up to Greenbelt Road. In that situation, in order to make that connection, we'd have to put in a retaining wall, and we'd have to relocate some of our vacuum as well as our air pump. And unfortunately, there was no way where else on site where we could relocate those, that equipment. And again, this use is a gas station, it is a car wash, and the vacuum and the air pump are a necessary component of that use, it's part of, you know, what everyone expects when they go to a gas station. And then again, and then again, in order to do it, we most likely have to obtain alternative compliance for the landscape manual, because, go ahead.
All right, Commissioner Washington, sorry to interrupt you, but can we please go to the slide that we can see exactly what was being proposed, and as you talk about the different shifts, it would just help to have a visual.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Please go to slide number 10, that's the larger slide, you'll see the slide. It's Henry speaking, Henry Zhang.
There you go, okay.
Yeah, and if we, you can walk the person through the staff's intended conditions and then what you're talking about in terms of why it can and cannot work, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And this is the gas station, it's right next to the little shopping center, little strip center with UPS and everything right there?
That's, Madam Chair, I believe that kind of sits behind us on Aerospace Drive, this is next to a consolidated storage facility.
Right, okay.
And then directly behind us is an existing car wash, it's, you know, it's a stolen used car wash.
Okay, got it.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a street of that shopping center.
Okay.
Wrong.
So if you look at the site plan, the landscape plan that has been put up on the screen, and Henry, you can help guide them with the arrow, if you have control, you'll look at the proposed car wash.
Well, you have it, Mr. Flanagan has the cursor, okay, thank you.
Right there, so the proposed car wash.
Yes, sorry, I don't have it.
Okay, that's fine. So the connection would go from Aerospace Drive, which is located at the left, on the left side of the property, would go in front of the car wash, and then what we have in our difficulty is making connection from in front of the car wash up to the food and beverage store, because we can't, we're having trouble making that ADA compliant. In order to make it ADA compliant, we can't have a slope that's too steep, so we cannot make that ADA compliant without moving some curve, curve, excuse me. The other connection would go from the food and beverage store, and then if you kind of go to the right of the food and beverage store, down to you'll see a landscape strip located on the right-hand side of the property. It would have to go through that landscape strip and then eventually make connection to Greenbelt Road. That landscape strip is larger than is necessary under the subdivision, excuse me, under landscape manual, but the reason why it's larger than necessary is because we do have equipment located in front of that landscape strip, and that would be our air pump as well as our vacuum, and that's the only location on the site where we can locate that equipment. But we would be required to put a sidewalk in along that eastern property line, that's the property line on the right-hand side of the property, all the way down to Greenbelt Road. And then in order to put that sidewalk in, we would now have to construct a retaining wall along that portion of the eastern property line, which is not proposed under this current detailed site plan, that would, we would have to revise it and add the retaining wall. So again, my clients on other sites have been more than happy to accommodate sidewalks that make a connection to, the sidewalks located along the streets, but in this situation, we're just having difficulty addressing that, and it really is, not that we don't have the desire to do it, but it just becomes very, very complicated, especially since we're trying to also address the ADA requirements that were required to meet when we install these pedestrian connections. Now, the reason why this is an issue with staff is, staff is looking to the guidelines set forth in the zoning ordinance relative to your review of detailed site plan, and specifically, staff is looking to the guidelines set forth in 27274-2C, which specifically addresses vehicular and pedestrian circulation on site. And in this situation, we have 11 different guidelines that are, we try to incorporate into everyone of our sites that are subject to detailed site plan review. Again, just the actual connection, okay, is just one of those guidelines. In addition to that, you also look at what is one of the primary concerns when we're designing one of these sites, and that is to make sure that we're preventing vehicular conflicts as well as vehicular to pedestrian conflicts on site. One of the ways that we do that is, for instance, driveway that's located, driveway that's located between the food and beverage store and the gas canopy, we normally make that larger than is required under the zoning ordinance. That's a two-way drive aisle, and that's normally required to be about 24 feet. In this situation, we, the drive aisle is 36 feet. And again, anyone who's kind of maneuvered their way through a gas station understands you have cars backing out of those spaces in front of the store, you have cars that are accessing the gas pumps, and you're trying to create as much distance between those two actions as possible. So we do, that's just one of the ways that in our minds and according to your own guidelines that we're addressing the vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site. In addition, we have provided a five-foot sidewalk in front of the food and beverage store, and we're also obviously providing sidewalks on Greenbelt Road and on Aerospace Drive. We also provide crosswalks across our engine drives, so a lot of the guidelines that are set forth in zoning ordinance are being addressed on the site, we just don't look at this, it's just one guideline we're trying to address, we're looking at all 11 guidelines and trying to incorporate those into the design of this site. Now, the thing that's really important here is, and this is where I'm having a little trouble with staff requiring this connection, is the fact that, the guidelines are just that, they're guidelines, okay? It's just one of the factors that you look at in terms of designing your site. They're not regulations, they're not standards, they're guidelines. And so we try to incorporate all of the guidelines into our designs of these sites, and to say that we absolutely have to provide these sidewalk connections from our food and beverage store to a sidewalk on Greenbelt Road and a sidewalk on Aerospace Drive is kind of missing the point of why these guidelines are in place, which is, you know, they're guidelines, and the board, when they're reviewing this, looks at those guidelines, it has to make a determination as to whether or not.
All right, let me stop everybody for a second, somebody needs to turn their mic off, because somebody else is making, is contributing some noise, some background noise. And then, and then while, I don't know what that sound is, maybe it sounds like a ceiling fan or something. But while I have you on pause, Mr. Lynch, I just want to get some clarity, so. So, you know, at first, when Mr. Zhang said it was across the street, I'm like, that can't be, but it's across Aerospace Road from that little strip, it's across the side street, Aerospace, from that little...
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And that's an existing Shell station, right?
That's correct, it's existing, yes.
It's the Shell station I use all the time, so I'm trying to, and I know the elevation across the street is kind of high on Aerospace, and they've got that on one side, and you have no access across the street to that little shopping center. And so I guess I'm trying to, what I can't remember, is there a sidewalk there in front of that little...
There's a sidewalk on the Aerospace Drive, and what we're doing is, we currently have, Madam Chair, two access driveways on Aerospace Drive.
Yep.
And we're removing one and having just one access driveway.
Okay, because I use that one, so I know that one. Okay, so what about, what about on Greenbelt Road there? There's no sidewalk there, right?
We're putting in a sidewalk on Greenbelt Road.
No, but I mean next, across from, with that little strip mall, is there?
No, there's not.
Okay. And what about the church? What's on the other side? So what, the shoppers?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may, the church is basically on the east side of the site. That means further to the east.
Okay.
Is that Aerospace? I'm not familiar with the area, so I have no idea when you talk about churches and shelves, where we're talking about. I mean, to the extent the partner can illustrate, would be helpful.
Henry, can someone...
Slide eight would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, slide five, please, yeah.
We'll go to slide five. I like slide eight, but okay. Okay, that's fine, too.
So there's the shopping center just to the left of the square. That's the shopping center that you're referencing, Madam Chair?
Correct, yes. Yes. Okay. So now, there's no sidewalk on Greenbelt Road there. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out, what is the sidewalk to, yeah, soon we're going to hear from, I guess, Mr. Burton, but what is the sidewalk supposed to connect to?
I believe what they're trying to do, if I may, go ahead, go ahead.
If I may, if I may, I'll defer this to Ms. Barnet Woods.
Okay.
Who is standing by trying to answer the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lynch, I know you're not finished yet, but I do want to, I need to get an understanding what this is supposed to connect to, so...
That's fine.
Mr. Barnett Woods, if you can help.
Good afternoon, this is Brian Barnett Woods with Transportation Planning Section.
Good afternoon.
So there's an existing sidewalk that's along Greenbelt Road.
Where?
And it goes all the way.
Because I want, hold on a second, Mr. Flanigan, hold on. Mr. Flanagan is here with us, and he's controlling the cursor, so if you can guide him.
Oh, yeah, so if you go from the corner of the subject site, that's kind of diagonally there, and you went all the way to the left, excuse me, to the right.
Okay.
So that sidewalk is completely in place to the end of the block.
Okay.
Because, all right, and then if we start again from the corner of the lot, and then if you went up, there's a sidewalk in place.
Aerospace, okay.
Mm-hmm, along Aerospace Drive for the next, for the next block.
So, I mean, the Shell station doesn't have a sidewalk in front of it on Greenbelt, is that what you're saying? I'm trying to...
No, 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 currently there is a sidewalk on both sides of the gas station, so on Aerospace and on Greenbelt.
Okay, so where, so what is it that you're looking for? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So we're looking for a pedestrian connection that would take someone from those sidewalks to the convenience store. And so, to talk a little bit more about it, so the guidelines that are in the zoning ordinance is vehicular and pedestrian circulation on a site should be safe, efficient, and convenient for both pedestrians and drivers. To fulfill this goal, the following guidelines should be observed. And then there's four that kind of relate to this issue. The first is pedestrian access should be provided into the site and through parking lots to the major destination from site. Pedestrian and vehicular circulation routes should generally be separated and clearly marked. The next one, crosswalks for pedestrians that stand vehicular lanes should be identified by the use of signs, stripes on the pavement, changing pavement material or similar techniques. And the last one, barrier-free pathways to accommodate the handicapped should be provided.
Okay, hold up, hold up.
We recommend a pedestrian connection so that if you were...
Mr. Barnett Woods, hold on a second, well, I'm going to, because Mr. Flanagan is going to follow you with the cursor, so your recommendation, guide him with the...
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So if you go slightly to the right, Slide 10, Slide 10, that's the larger slide. Okay, so if you look at the bottom of the site, there's two circles at the bottom right corner. So if you move from there, if you take that arrow and you go up, and then stop, a little bit lower, lower, stop, and then if you go to the left, and then stop, so a sidewalk that would go from Greenbelt Road to the convenience store.
So it's like an L, like an L shape, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be like an L shape.
Okay.
And then from Aerospace Drive, so if you keep going to left where you are now, stop, and then if you were to go right and then back to the entrance of that convenience store.
So that's, you want one there and then the L shape?
Yeah, so if you go right, so if you keep going right, to cross the car wash and then go to the convenience store. Sorry, if you're going left...
Are you, you're suggesting a sidewalk in between the entrance to the convenience store and the gas pumps? That does, that does not even abut the convenience store, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, 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 so we don't want to put pedestrians between the gas pumps and the convenience store.
Okay, but that's, where's the front of the convenience store? Is it at the bottom or the top of it?
So the convenience store is this square, the front of it is the bottom arrow.
Right, the entrance, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, and then what, because it's so hard to see, these images are so small, but then at the bottom, those gray sits, aren't those the gas pumps?
Um, yes. The gas pumps are where the arrows are right now?
Yeah, those, those are where the gas pumps are, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So again, you're suggesting a sidewalk in between the entrance to the convenience store and the gas pumps with all the activity that generally takes place in terms of cars backing in and out, or people, you know, most people pay at the pump, but some still do walk inside.
No, we're suggesting a sidewalk that would run from where they proposed an existing sidewalk along the very front of the convenience store, and then one would go all the way over to the right, and there would be a crosswalk at the car wash entrance, and then it would go all the way down, so the arrow moved all the way down, to Greenbelt Road. And so that would provide, with the exception of where the car wash entrance was, a route that pedestrians and motor vehicles would not come into conflict with each other. Additionally, we're requesting or recommending a pedestrian sidewalk that would come from Aerospace Drive.
Hold on a second, Aerospace is on the other side, it's on the left, far left, okay.
Yeah, so, so I guess if you put the arrow kind of like where the sidewalk, it's right where it is kind of now, and then you went slowly over right, so make it a little lower, okay, and then right, and then go in front of this car wash, and then stop there, and then it would go toward the convenience store, and then it would go to the entrance of the convenience store. And again, this also goes in front of the car wash exit, but this substantially reduces, you know, the opportunity for pedestrians and vehicular conflict. Additionally, you know, the Glendale Commons Department are north of this site and northeast of the site, and so people who are walking would arrive at the subject site from, on the sidewalk on, you know, Greenbelt Road or Aerospace Drive, and this would give them the opportunity to immediately turn onto the subject site and to avoid as much vehicular circulation as possible.
Okay, stop, stop, stop. So the people, and I know, I'm going to get back to Commissioner Washington, so the people who were, live in the apartments are not likely to drive in, and they may want to go to the convenience store for something. Where is, okay, take, I don't ever use that car wash, so where's, the entrance to the car wash is where that top arrow is or the bottom arrow? That, where's the entrance? Where does the car watch, where do the cars drive in?
So the cars drive in on the other side of the site. If you can move the arrow to the right, keep going, right there.
Okay.
That's the entrance of the drive, and you can see kind of where the pavement, it loops all the way around the back of the convenience store and then in.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. And then you go in that way?
Right there.
They go, they go in, they go in and come out the same way?
Madam Chair, the exit, go ahead.
No, they're actually...
No, they said, they said exit the building.
I'm sorry.
This is not clear.
If the car wash that I'm accustomed to, you drive in one side and you come out the other, so you're suggesting a sidewalk where the cars would exit, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
How do you do that?
Yeah, I've never seen anything like that.
So, so I, I admit that where that exit is, if the car wash can't be moved, isn't ideal, but the alternative is having people walking where the cars that are pulling in and out to the pumps and pulling in and out for the convenience store and pulling out for the drive, excuse me, for the car wash, that's all happening right there. So if there was crosswalk markings and a sign for motorists and for pedestrians, you know, to be wary of the other mode.
So the people in the apartment...
This would be an option for to make that happen.
Mr. Barnett Woods, let me, so the people in the apartment complex behind would be walking down Aerospace for the most part, right?
Mm-hmm.
So tell me about why we need it on the other side?
So if we go back one of the slides, you can see kind of the bird's eye view of where a lot of the development is.
So Slide number five, please.
That's the aerial photo. Okay, the aerial photo. So there's a lot of apartments, you can see that to the northwest of the site.
Yeah.
And then northeast of the site where there's, where there's marked lots, but it doesn't look like anything's been built there yet. That's all development there that's going to be new housing as part of the Glendale Commons development.
Okay.
And so if you were, if you move the arrow further to the right.
Oh.
Yeah, so, yeah, right there, so that's all going to be residential, too. And for many of those places, the shortest route to this convenience store would be not along Aerospace Drive, but would be going from the other direction and then to walk along Greenbelt. And most people tend to walk, you know, where is the shortest distance. And so having sidewalks on both sides of this, this development where people would walk is going to provide that direct and convenient route for that.
Can you direct, Mr. Flanagan? Okay, I, so they, go back up to the Commons over there to the right, right there. Okay, and you're saying they're going to come down that other side street right there and then to Greenbelt Road? Is that what you're saying? Most likely?
I, yeah, so I mean, pedestrians can arrive from the subject site from either sidewalk.
Okay.
And so having something on site that would kind of anticipate and accommodate the need that, you know, people walking or wheelchairs or pushing strollers or carts, I think is valuable to have on the site.
But, but if it's a wheelchair, what about Mr. Lynch's argument that it, it's not ADA compliant?
And so I understand his argument, but they are raising the entire site and they're providing these connections, it's kind of wholly within their power to do it. It seems like the facilities are difficult to include based on the designs of this plan that never really took people walking into account, and that's where we're having difficulty meeting these findings for the design guidelines.
You know what? I'm having, I'm having some problems with this, Mr. Barnett Woods. To your point and to your credit, there are a lot of apartments there, and perhaps it never did anticipate people walking, but I'm sure since that's the closest door rather than, for little things, rather than going to a big supermarket, that people might stop in there by, on foot. And that makes, so it makes sense to make some accommodation for pedestrians. I don't think we have to make accommodations everywhere for pedestrians, they don't have to have access every which way. I think they do need safe access, so, and I think we should...
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, if there were, if there were, if the proposed sidewalks that the staff was proposing were not there, how does, show me what the entry points to the site would be.
It would be the same entry point as where the cars are coming in.
Well, show me where that is. With a pointer, please.
Oh, it would be, I guess if we could go back to the slide that had the detailed...
You can, you can access via green, right, currently you can access via Greenbelt or Aerospace.
Slide nine, please.
Yeah. So this slide works, yeah, so where that, where the cursor is right now, pedestrians would access the site, they would step off the sidewalk and then walk onto the drive, the driveway entrance, and then they would walk to the convenience store through the gas pumps there. And then it would be the same for the Green, for the Aerospace Road entrance.
And the Aerospace is to the left, that's an in and out as well, correct?
Yeah, and so the pedestrians would get off the sidewalk and then just use the roadway to access this site, so...
But you don't have to go through the gas pumps? You can go to the right of the gas pumps, a pedestrian can, right?
Yeah, but it's the same space where the cars would be traveling, because you can see where the up and down arrows are in that square.
Okay, fine, you know what?
The cars are traveling all over this site, either getting a car wash, getting gas, I mean, it's just, it just seems like too much to me.
I think we should have...
I know, and that's why having, I think, a sidewalk outside of kind of that realm of where all the cars are is beneficial.
I think we should prioritize. I don't, I don't think everybody, I don't think you need pedestrian access all over. I think we should, I think it's a good idea perhaps to have safe pedestrian access, but I think we should prioritize.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have a compromise solution here.
Which is?
Which is, okay, if you look, you already know the site, and we're expecting a major pedestrian travel to this site on food from the existing apartment complex to the northeast and also from the future Glendale development, also to the northeast. This is the shortest distance people would like possibly to travel by foot. And then, and also looking at grading, staff and applicant work out the solution, which will be ADA compatible and then directly connected to the sidewalks on the Aerospace Drive. And then I think if this will, the other reason is that this is a very small site, it's only less than an acre, so I think the compromise here will be the applicant will going to provide that pedestrian connection from the sidewalk on Aerospace Drive to the side. Then we can allow them to delete the possible, or propose the connection from the Greenbelt Road, because that's first, A is a long one, and B, they don't have enough space to accommodate other site amenity, like, you know, air pump, you know. And then C, I think the grading is difficult to, you know, meet AD ramp slope of one to, ones to, ones up to 20s, excuse me. And then giving those existing challenge of the side, I think, and also as Madam Chair mentioned, this is a, we have to prioritize, and it looks like to me, a connection from Aerospace Drive will be a physical one.
Okay. Mr. Zhang, I'm going to ask Mr. Lynch what he thinks about that, I'm also going to ask Mr. Barnett Woods what he thinks about that. But I'm also looking at, okay, so the proposed, the future apartment complex right there, yeah, right there, right down, yeah, right in there.
Yeah.
Is there any fencing or anything? Because people are going to be trespassing. If there's, if there's no fencing and the shortest distance between two points is a straight line, people are going to be cutting through, especially if they're, you know, where's the church, right there?
Church is to you right-hand side, further.
Right there, okay, okay. Okay, so, okay, so people, I just believe people, if there's no fencing, people are just gonna cut through somewhere. You know, they, and they may be trespassing, but that's what's gonna happen, okay? Um, I mean, but anyway, so, um, Mr. Barnett Woods, how are you on what, um, Mr. Zhang just proposed?
I mean, I think it is a good compromise, um. I will continue to strive to endeavor to make sure that we can accommodate and anticipate the needs of pedestrians moving forward.
No, I agree with that, and I, I, and I applaud you for looking out for, because, because a lot of people don't anticipate pedestrians coming to a gas station, but when you have that convenience store there and you have all of those units right there, it makes sense that some people are not gonna go, when they, if they just ran out of a stick of butter or something, they're gonna go right there, you know, or, um, so, um.
Madam Chair, I have one question when you're done, of Mr. Zhang.
Yes, and so I applaud you for that, and, um, so I, so you should continue to advocate for pedestrians, Mr. Barnett Woods, and I, we are not suggesting that you don't, I just think this is a tight site. I am actually familiar with this, I use that gas station every time I go to PRA, every time I go to EOB, and I'm running out of gas, that's where I darn it. And, and, and so, I, it's tight, and, um, um, so I think that's a compromise. And I just wanted to know what your thoughts were, I know ideally you would like it, the pedestrian access all over, but I think that's a compromise. I will then turn to Mr. Lynch for his comments after Commissioner Washington asks her question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I just wanna make, so the compromise would be access from Aerospace to the convenience store, I guess my question and concern, quite frankly, is, is it still in front of, or at, in, in front of the exit to the car wash? Because of, of, less, my, I'm less concerned obviously about adults, but again, if you're talking about, you know, multifamily, children are running, I, I just would not wanna encourage any, any sort of pedestrian, um, uh, walkability, quite frankly, I mean, directly in, in, uh, in the path of a vehicle. So I just wanna, I just want, I would like a clarifying. To someone to clarify.
Ms. Lynch, can I answer that question, 'cause I-
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, um, Commissioner Washington, yes, um, it would put basically a crosswalk in front of the exit door for the car wash. And although we can accommodate that and make that ADA compliant, our concern all along has been to encourage people to walk directly in front of our car wash exit. Um, so that's the concern that we had. Uh, first and foremost, the concern was our ability to make it ADA compliant and, and we've found that we could. But then our second concern is encouraging people to walk directly in front of the exit for the car wash. We just don't think that is gonna make the site pedestrian friendly.
I absolutely agree, I absolutely agree with that.
Uh, i- i- if I may, um.
They're gonna do, you wanna join in?
Let me, Mr. Zhang, before you ask a question, let me ask you a question, 'cause I've been wanting to ask this for probably twenty minutes. Um, I don't believe horizontally, the, the car wash, so if I was on the other side of the convenience store, I realize people typically drive, um, potentially the opposite way, like when, when they're going kinda, kinda clockwise or going to the right, but what would be the problem of flipping the car wash to the other side, you would protect the pedestrians and then you could potentially do the crosswalk there, um, and then, a- another kind of just site question, why can't you take the air pumps and move them to the corner of, um, of, of Aerospace right there where you've got like kind of a median, um, right now that, that's, that's got sort of where the sidewalks meet, um, 'cause I, I've seen that on other sites as well. And then finally I'll ask, like, it's, at the end of the day, what kind of crosswalks are we gonna have, like just paintings on, on, on the, the actual asphalt if we don't do these, these sidewalks?
Commissioner Dorn, Mr. Zhang, let's have a question posted.
Yeah. No, for, for me, let me, let me answer it first.
Okay, hold, hold on, hold on, Mr., hold on, Mr. Zhang, you'll be next, Mr. Zhang. Um, Mr. Lynch may comment, and, and Mr. Bilaj has some comments as well. Okay.
Um, with regards to relocating that equipment to the area you're suggesting, Commissioner, um, that area is a four point two landscape strip and we can't put equipment in that landscape strip. Also, that equipment would then be more visible to, you know, people traveling along both Greenbelt Road as well as Aerospace Drive. So we locate that in an area that's not occupied by a landscape strip, that's why it's located where it is today. Um, so if we were, for instance, um, and, and I'll just say this, we're normally discouraged from putting that equipment, um, that close to, um, a roadway. Normally, just so you understand, um, the development of these sites is subject to twenty seven three five eight of the zoning ordinance, um, which are your standard gas station regulations, and those normally require that equipment be set back at least twenty five feet from a street line. Um, the tech, the amendments to the zoning ordinance that's required a detailed site plan now in the I one zone did not subject gas stations to the twenty seven three five eight requirement. So from a, um, from a setback standpoint, we could locate the equipment there, but from a landscape manual standpoint, we'd be prohibited from putting it in front of those parking spaces, so that just makes it difficult for us. Um, with regard to flipping the car wash, uh, we explored that, um, concept back in twenty fifteen. Um, and couldn't make the grades work in order to accommodate the car wash. And also, if we had the car wash we have today, we'd have, um, a greater possibility of queuing occurring, um, out into our drive aisles with, which the layout that you had before, you prevent, you'll see that there's a very large queuing area that lo, is located behind the food and beverage store. So by relocating the car wash to the right side of Food and Beverage Store, we would be, we'd be susceptible to queuing occurring back out into drive aisles and interfering with the overall flow of the site.
Okay, um, Mr. Zhang, Mr. Zhang?
Is it physically possible, so, Mr. Lynch, besides ignoring the, the queuing comment, 'cause you go the other way, sure, you're gonna have queuing coming and blocking potentially the Aerospace Road entrance. Um, regard, regardless of that, like, you said that there was a potential grade issue, um, is it impossible to flip it over to the other side, 'cause it, it seems, while I, I appreciate my other colleagues' comments, I'm actually in aligning more so with Mr. Barnett Woods, that this is a problem you brought on to yourself, and, and but for your design, you wouldn't have this problem. Um, so I, I'm trying to figure out like why you, you actually can't put it on the other side, because I do think that we need to accommodate pedestrians and, while they don't need to rule the world of, of every development and, and completely change the developments, um, we, we certainly don't need the alternative to let cars rule every development, and that seems like where this is kind of going.
Well, I, 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 the, the, one thing I would say is that cars rule this development for the most part, because it's an auto-oriented use. Um, it's a gas station and a car wash, which are vehicle-related uses. Um, so our primary concern on a site such as this is to accommodate vehicles coming in and off the site. That's not to say that we ignore, um, you know, conflict between pedestrian, and vehicles on site, and as I stated in my initial comment, the one thing that this, my client does on this site is to accommodate and to prevent any conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians, and if you look closely at the site plan, and it's not up for you now, but if you look at the site plan, we have very, very wide drive aisles on this site. And the reason why we have such wide drive aisles is to help prevent the conflict between vehicles and pedestrians. Um, and we also have very, very clear lines of sight, um, so that vehicles that are maneuvering to the site, they, there, there's nothing inhibits their ability to see pedestrians that are possibly walking through, um, the parking lot either from the gas pumps or from, um, sidewalks located on Aerospace Drive and Greenbelt Road. So you'll see, I mean, for instance, a drive aisle in Prince George's County is, two-way drive aisle is required to be twenty four feet of width. And in one situation, I think we have thirty six foot wide drive aisle, and then another we have a, um, a thirty two point two foot drive aisle, so we have very, very, very wide drive aisles on this site in order to prevent the possible conflicts. Um, so again, I, and, and if we can accommodate, um, the, the connection requested by Mr. Barnett Woods, we have in the past, and I think Ms. Kozak has made that request to me on at least two other sites we've done, where we've made those direct connections to, um, sidewalks that have joined the property. Unfortunately, it's not as easy as just putting in a sidewalk, we do have to make sure that that is ADA compliant, and as indicated, we are having difficulty making the connection from Aerospace Drive to the C store or for the Food and Beverage Store ADA compliant. And then you also have to keep in mind that we're dealing with, you know, a redevelopment of an existing property, and there's a lot of existing site constraints on this property that don't just jump out at you. And one of the things that I pointed out to staff is that if we put a sidewalk in along our e, our eastern property line, although we don't have a, um, a retaining wall today, the construction of that sidewalk will require a retaining wall. In addition, which I didn't mention earlier, there's an existing gas line that runs along that entire, um, eastern property line, and the construction of that, and we may not even be able to construct a retaining wall given the location of that gas line. So there's a lot of things that constrain us. Now, we did in twenty fifteen, look at putting the gas station, excuse me, the car wash on the right side of the Food and Beverage Store. We looked at that, that was something that was, it was explored. But we couldn't make, and, and, and that work, and as you'll see there, one of the reasons why we couldn't make it work is you'll see that dotted line? That is at the upper, uh, corner of the Food and Beverage Store, you see that? That is, that's an easement, which we can't construct anything on, so that prevents us from moving that, that, um, that gas, excuse me, the, um, car wash to the right side of the building, that car wash would have to be located on that easement, or not able to construct a building on that easement area.
Um, okay, let me turn to, um, Mr. Bilaj.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, Derek Bilaj, Acting Deputy Planning Director, I simply wanted to, um, respond to Ms. Washington's excellent question about pedestrians on the car wash exit, and maybe give a fuller explanation of staff's thinking. We believe that pedestrians will walk from the apartments to the convenience store, and they are most likely to walk in front of the exit from the car wash, whether or without a crosswalk or a sidewalk, because that is the fastest way for them to get to the convenience store. So the question is, as they're crossing the exit to the car wash, should that be something that's just happening without the, the vehicle driver having any expectation of pedestrians? Or should there be a crosswalk and a walkway that makes it more likely that the driver exiting from the car wash will expect a pedestrian to be there, because it's, it's, it's clearly visible that this is a place where pedestrians may be found? Uh, without the crosswalk, we still think pedestrians are likely to cross at that location, because it's the fastest way to get to the convenience store. The second concern is that if pedestrians don't cross in front of the car wash, because they're not directed to do that, they're likely to enter the site from the ingress egress a little bit further south, which is where the, most of the cars are coming and going at a much higher speed. Cars coming out of a car wash normally going pretty slowly. Cars coming in and out of the site from Aerospace will be going more quickly, and if pedestrians enter and exit there, we think that creates a greater risk. Uh, this applicant is, is trying to fit three different uses on a, a very small site, and that makes it, makes it challenging. Uh, staff simply thinks that what's been proposed is a, is a good compromise between protecting the pedestrians and allowing the applicant, um, to realize the three uses they're seeking to obtain.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bilaj, I, I appreciate that, um, but let me just say, I, I have, I have strong opinion about encouraging that kind of pedestrian walkway, whether they do it or not, I mean, that's, that's clearly a decision. And I mean, when you're exiting, exiting a car wash, granted, you're not necessarily going at the same speed, but speed is relative if you're, you know, a child, and you just happen to run across at the wrong time where somebody's exiting a car wash, um, you know, I, I see things labeled for crosswalks all over this county and all over this country, quite frankly, and people are being killed and hit by, hit by vehicles all the time. And I just don't think we, I, I would feel very uncomfortable encouraging that.
So let me ask you, okay, when, when you exit that car wash, is there some kind of speed bump or bump there, is there sign, will there be signage there indicating pedestrian crossing? Will there be, and hopefully little-
Yes.
Okay, hopefully there won't be little children, hopefully parents and adults wouldn't let little children go by to, into an auto, um, use place like that, um, auto-centered use, um, where there's car wash and gas station with, you know, without an adult, if they're, if they're little children. Um, but if, you know, signage and all that other stuff can help, and, and then it would just be, uh, uh, and, and I'm trying to understand this, it would be a sidewalk, then it would just, um, be like a driveway, it would just drop down to like a drive, okay, and, and, um, but I, but maybe, maybe a speed bump and then maybe, you know, maybe signage, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm grappling with this, 'cause, so, can someone help?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, yes. I think we can have a different option in place, and to the minimum, uh, we can have the signage just to warning the, the driver when they're coming out of the, uh, car wash. And then please keep in mind, that drive aisle is not that wide, it's just like a one lane, it's like ten feet. So people can easily cross that very quickly. And then if we want to push forward, I mean, furthermore, we can, you know, ask them to build a, you know, speed bump before they're coming, you know, to the, to the, um, uh, sidewalk, or raise that sidewalk a little bit, so those are the different, uh, design options. Uh, I tried to answer, uh, Mr. Dorn's question, because if you look at the, the site, uh, there are two, there are two entrances from the Greenbelt Road, but those are the right in, right out, so that has been, you know, uh, dedicate, I mean, dictated by the highway administration. And then, but Aerospace Drive, they have four entrances, which in and out on, on, in this, on the same entrance. And then from the category of roadway, Greenbelt Road is arterial roadway, and then they're expecting major traffic coming from that direction. Then if you put those elements all together, you can see this is a good side design in term of the onsite circulation with car coming directly to the, uh, from the east, they are riding to the side, and then it's through this long, uh, tuning spaces, and then the car coming out from the, the car wash. Uh, and then the secondary access basically is from Aerospace, and then you will see, you know, by the transportation perspective, they will not have much of the, you know, average daily traffic compared to the, uh, Greenbelt Road. I think that's why, and, uh, I, I believe it's practical and also feasible, and then in order to save our pedestrian on the side, uh, the connection from the Aerospace Drive to the site is a, is a preferred option in the situation we have here. Uh, therefore, I, I think, uh, we can, uh, staff recommend, uh, the planning board basically allow, uh, the applicant to delete the condition one B, which that's the connection, uh, directly from the Greenbelt Road, but at the same time, we keep the condition one C, that's the connection from the Aerospace Drive. Thank you.
Okay.
Question on that, if, Mr. Zhang, if you do that, I'm, I'm not a huge fan necessarily of the speed bump, like, I understand the idea, but if you're going from a stop i- inside of a car wash, you're not accelerating that fast. I'm af, I'm afraid that having a speed bump, then they might pose an actual challenge to the pedestrians if they're having to walk over it, if it's in the way. And what might be more helpful, besides the, the warning sign is that you guys have already put into the conditions, would be something like a mirror that would allow visibility for the drivers to see at, at an angle, like anyone who's crossing over, if that's possible, or just some electronic trigger, that when there's a, a car going through there, it lights up like a light or something, at the curbs, pedestrians can see that, and in another direction, the drivers who are coming through, um, can see if somebody passes a certain area that it gets triggered and a red light comes up to tell them that, that's in the shape of like a person or something, that there's a person that's about to walk in front of them. I think that would actually address the safety issues much more directly than just the speed bump, which, which might actually pose some, some challenges.
And that, and I, I think that's a good idea, um, if, 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 if that's possible, and- And what I learned a while ago, you know, I didn't, you know, there was a difference between a speed bump and a speed hump. So that's what I was talking about, the, not, not something as dramatic as a speed bump, but, you know, they do have these little humps. They, I think they have them right here in front of the CAB. But, okay, so, Mr. Lynch, how about that? Or whoever wants to comment.
Well, once again, Madam Chair, Dan Lynch, on behalf of the applicant. As indicated, we have the ability to make the connection from aerospace drive.
Okay.
We'll have to, it's, we have that ability. We are, remain concerned about, you know, encouraging people to walk directly in front of the car wash, but we can make that connection.
With some safety precautions.
So we can do that. Go ahead.
With some safety precautions. I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes. You'll see, for example, the risk condition 1D, which says provide pedestrian warning signage at the exit of the car wash, warning motorists of possible pedestrian movement. I don't know whether or not we can provide the speed hump. I believe we can. Would it be a speed bump or would it be a speed hump? To kind of, you know, slow traffic down.
Right, right.
But again, we can accommodate that, okay?
I mean, more inclined to have kind of motion sensors and lighting, the things that Mr. or Commissioner Dorner described. To me, that would, you know, and or a mirror. I mean, really something that signals, I mean, look, most of us have motion detectors around our home. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be that difficult to accommodate. And the mirror, I think, is a really good idea.
The mirror is good. The mirror is simple, and we can start there at a minimum, right?
Yeah. We can install a mirror, which would allow motors to see pedestrians coming from the west or east in that area. We can accommodate that. As to the sensors, I can't speak to that presently, whether or not we can come up with a sensor under these circumstances.
Well, I would like, at a minimum, I would like the sensor to be a consideration as a minimal. Because, uh...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. I mean, they've got that over by, like, we just did a case a couple months ago of people walking across the street by the casino in National Harbor. And that triggers a sensor. I have one over by me that's a couple miles away on a bike trail that when you pass by, it triggers, and it starts blinking. Like, I, I don't think technology-wise, that's going to be a very big challenge.
And look, Mr. Lynch, you know, you're ahead right now.
I, oh, I'm not, I'm not objecting, Madam Chair. I'm just saying, I can't speak to whether it's feasible. That's beyond, that's beyond my educational background.
Okay.
Well, we can leave it as a possibility for consideration.
To explore in earnest. Okay.
Right.
That's...
Okay.
Yeah, I would actually like to have our planning board staff be able to review it. I don't want to leave this up to the notion of the applicant because it's a lot cheaper to install a sensor than it is to litigate a death.
Yeah, I agree.
I would refer our planning board staff have the final authority or a director about whether or not that seems like a good idea.
Or in consultation with. It could be in consultation with.
Exactly.
Okay. Have we gotten somewhere here? Okay. All right. Does anybody else feel compelled to say anything? Mr. Lynch, in accordance with our rules of procedure, the applicant always has the last word. So let me see if our staff has anything else to say. Mr. Zhang or Mr. Barnett Woods? Anything else on your part?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. I think if you look at the exhibit submitted by the applicant, in this case, we're going to agree to delete Condition 1B, which requires the connection from the Greenbelt.
Okay.
This is one thing. The second thing is on Condition 1D. I think I heard clearly, because we have this condition as for a pedestrian warning signage. I'd like to add just another phrase is to reflect the mirror requirement as the commissioner all proposed. Basically, provide pedestrian warning signage and the mirror at the exit of the car wash, warning the motorists of possible pedestrian movement. And then this is the second thing. The third thing will be, I, we will provide the finding in the resolution. Basically, as Madam Chair mentioned, that the applicant would like to, or ask them to explore the possibility to install some, you know, motion sensor at the, you know, exit of the car wash in order to safeguard the safety of the pedestrian crossing.
You know what? That, that can be, Mr. Zhang, that could be new condition, because you're eliminating Condition B. So that could be new Condition B, which still says explore. Okay.
Okay. That, that would be fine, too.
Right.
In consultation with staff. I was, I know you may not have been finished, Mr. Zhang. Okay.
Okay. Basically, we're going to add that. Just ask the applicant to explore the possibility to install the electronic devices in consultation with the staff.
Electronic safety sensors?
Okay.
Or something, yeah. Okay. Wait, was there a motion? I didn't even hear a motion. She's seconding or something. Okay. Okay. Was that it for you, Mr. Zhang?
Yeah, yes, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
That's it.
Okay. I should have asked Mr. Barnett Woods. You got some of what you wanted here. Okay.
No further comments.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Is there, is there a motion?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Who is this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington.
Wait, no, wait, no, wait, hold up. Who's talking? Somebody was saying, "Good afternoon, everyone." Did I miss somebody? Oh, yes.
Yeah, hey, hi, good afternoon, everybody. This is, this is Andrew Laura.
I'm sorry.
Civil engineer for the project.
My fault.
I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that this connection that we can make, we cannot turn the sidewalk to the left of the car wash once you get past the exit and you're walking into the site to go left and then turn the corner to the convenience store. That cannot be ADA compliant. Staff has said we can end the sidewalk and let pedestrians disperse into that left handicap space. So it will not technically be a connection to the building. It'll be a connection to that ADA parking space. That is the only ADA-compliant path that can be provided.
Can you please have that illustrated with the arrow when the person controlling?
Yes.
So it's starting on aerospace, right? So you're saying the sidewalk, so start there. Start there.
And please guide Mr. Flanagan, Mr. Laura.
So, yeah. Surely, so, yes, Mr. Flanagan, so you'll, yep, right there, your cursor, yep, you're going to go across the car wash exit. Yeah, so you're going right, correct. And the ideal connection would be, from where your cursor is, you would go up and connect to the sidewalk in front of the store. That's correct. We cannot provide an ADA-compliant path to connect to that sidewalk. Instead, if you take your cursor back down, yes. The sidewalk is just going to, the ramp will end at that ADA handicap space. And that's where it would be dispersing pedestrians.
So you're saying once, once they, how do they get into the store?
They would use that handicap ramp.
Oh, okay. Right to the right of the space? Right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what we discussed.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, we discussed that with staff. And staff, Ms. Kozak and I had a discussion regarding that. And she said it's not optimal, but it's the best we can do.
Okay.
And let me, a clarifying question, because, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch the name of the engineer speaking.
Mr. Laura.
But when we're on aerospace, that's an actual sidewalk. I thought we had moved to some sort of crosswalk as opposed to sidewalk in front of a car wash?
No.
Because now, well, now we have cars exiting over a sidewalk and a speed hump?
Well, the sidewalk... Go ahead, Mr. Lynch.
It would be crosswalk.
Okay.
It's a crosswalk, right?
Correct.
Right, but that's my saying. But in the staff report, it clearly states sidewalk, because I'm about to make that adjustment. So I want to make sure we're being clear about what we're talking about.
I thought we were talking about sidewalk. So crosswalk is just stripes.
Crosswalk.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear either of you.
It says including, the condition says including a crosswalk.
Okay. And that's what was...
But it says provide a minimum five-foot sidewalk on aerospace drive to building entrance. So it actually becomes, it's a sidewalk on aerospace, and then the, this is a question. The crosswalks will begin from aerospace up to the handicap ramp?
Or, or is it, or is it a sidewalk that continues and then becomes a crosswalk in front of the car wash exit?
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, now, it becomes a crosswalk in front of the, in front of the car wash exit.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay. That, that's, that's what I'm asking, I wanted, that's my understanding. I just wanted to be clear about that's what the intent is.
Okay. That's correct.
Okay.
So I have another question, since we got this other issue that came up. Is there no ability to move the car wash over just slightly so you'd have enough sidewalk space so somebody can make that left turn instead of going down into the handicap space? Because if, if you're in a wheelchair and you're trying to cross over this, and there's a car parked in that handicap space, and you don't have sidewalk, you have no option. You have to go back out into the parking lot or something. So I'm wondering if we can make any additional sidewalk space there or if you can even just move one of those handicap spaces to another place and we can relinquish the amount of required parking spaces just so we have a safe connection within there. And we can just make a larger sidewalk area right there. We can put in a bike rack or something else.
Commissioner Dorner, this is Dan Lynch. It's not the width of that area that we can't make ADA compliant. It's the slope. It'll be greater than is allowed under the ADA requirements. That's where the difficulty comes. So by, by making that side, that area there flush with the handicap parking space, we're able to make it ADA compliant. But we can't bring them north and still keep the connection ADA compliant. It's not the width.
It's just, it's too much of a slope. If they were to turn left, if there's a car parked there and they turn left as they're crossing over in front of the car wash, they turn left, it's just a higher slope, kind of going up.
That's correct.
I'm fine with that. That, I think that's due along.
All right. Is everyone finished? Everyone said all that they need to say? Now we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-0021 along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report with the following modification. Deletion of Condition 1B. Condition 1C shall be augment, I'm sorry. Condition 1D shall be augmented to include the provision for mirrors and a speed hump at the exit of the car wash. There will also be a condition added, and I would ask staff to ensure this, the language is consistent with the discussion and the record. But it shall include, explore in earnest electronic safety sensor technology or equipment for pedestrian crossing at the exit of the car wash.
Right.
And it must also be done in consultation with our staff.
And that would be new Condition B, Sub condition B.
Yes, yes. New Condition B. Yes, I would suggest to use devices in term of specific, identify anything. Basically, electronics.
Devices, devices including sensors.
That's fine. I want them to work with staff and get the language right. We're, it's a parliamentary, yeah, we need to finish our motion.
Consistent with the discussion, okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
So...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have we finished it? Have we finished the most?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I'm trying to get to a second. Was that your second?
I seconded.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I hope there's no additional discussion. Is there? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Madam Vice Chair, excuse me, Madam Vice Chair? It was a nice try, though. Commissioner Washington?
Aye, yes, aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
I was going to have to think about it, but I'll go aye.
Okay. And we're cutting in the Commissioner Washington's food now. Okay. Okay, the ayes have it for zero. Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there any additional business to come before planning board today?
Thank you. There are no additional items before the board today. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Everybody stay safe. Good to see you. All right, take care. Thanks. Bye-bye.